At this time, we'll call our monthly Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And at this time, we're going to have an invocation and a pledge. And I'll ask Vice Chairman Langley to do the invocation and Commissioner Bren to do the pledge.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful that you have allowed us to assemble here again to do the business of your county. Guide us in making wise and prudent decisions. And we'll give your name to glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
First prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're down to item number C, conflict of interest. At this time, does any commissioner have a conflict that they would like to reveal?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to vote unless the board insists on the sale of county property because of the individual that has made the offers. I do work for him.
Is there anyone else? All right. We're down to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion to-
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the agenda, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote was unanimous. I, we're down to the public hearing, but because of the time, we still have that scheduled for 5:40 was advertised. So I'm going to move into public comments and-
I thought you pulled that.
That on, in the newspaper, it was advertised at five o'clock or there, close to that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
So we're good on that?
About thirty or soon.
All right. I stand corrected. Okay, we have two public hearings tonight, and we have to take those separate. So the first one is Project Garden, Marty Johnson. And I need a motion to open the public here.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Martin, it's yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed economic development performance grant to Project Garden. Project Garden designs and manufactures point-of-purchase displays for Fortune 500 consumer goods companies. The company proposes to invest $1 million in new equipment and buildings renovation and create 53 jobs if Beaufort County is selected for the project. The proposed performance grant in the amount of $8,567 will be used to match a potential $50,000 ONE NC grant. A performance grant requires the company to meet its capital investment and job creation goals in order to receive the proposed grant funding. The county intends to use general fund revenues as the source of the funding for this project. The public benefit derived from this performance grant is to increase tax base and the creation of new jobs in Beaufort County. So I'd open the floor for comments.
Is there anyone that would like to speak that's here tonight representing the public? Are we required to open this for one minute? Or-
Just make an announcement.
Is there anyone in the hall, Seth?
No, sir.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Okay, I entertain a motion to come out of the closed session. I mean, not closed session, the-
Public hearing.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Busio.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go into our second public hearing. And I need a motion to go in that. That relates to the petition to name a road.
So moved.
Commissioner Bren.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, Chairman Waters. The subject of the public hearing tonight is a completed petition to name a private road submitted by Mr. Oscar Taylor. In discussions with Commissioner Richardson, we've just uncovered some issues related to the property adjacent to this road, related to actually the easement along which this private road travels. We'd like to handle the public hearing tonight, open and close that as advertised, and then come back to y'all next month to take action on the petition if it pleases the board. We think we can resolve these issues in a month's time.
Okay. We are open, so is there any, any public citizen that would like to make a comment? Seeing and not hearing any, then I'll entertain a motion to come out of the-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I, can you clarify some of the issues? Can you do that?
I'm assuming we're coming out, we'll come out and then discuss that.
It's not an issue relating to Rome Damon.
Okay.
It's related to some right-of-way issues that we did, that are going to be addressed. But what we want to do, since the public hearing was advertised relating to the name, we want to go ahead and have the public hear. And that way, we don't have to redo it and re-advertise that cost. So we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting for action based on taking care of those issues.
So we need, we need a motion and a second. If we get that to come out of the-
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Langley.
Second.
And Commissioner Evans with the second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Whoa, 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 let me just say one thing. I want to be sure that everybody understands that the right-of-way issue has to be resolved before the road can be named. So if it's not resolved at the meeting next month, then it's not going to go in by default.
You got to come back to us for-
He's got to come back.
He stated.
That's correct.
And show some maps.
That's correct. They'll come back and bring it to you as an action item.
Okay.
But the, but the public hearing had to be advertised, and we spent money to advertise that. We didn't want to have to do it again and spend those funds.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that part, but-
Okay. This vote is to come out of the public hearing. All right, all those in favor coming out?
Oh, it's a lot.
Okay, good. Vote was unanimous?
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any further comments?
No, sir, not at this time.
I'll go back to my question. Is it right-of-way issue?
Yes, sir. It's a easement width issue. Easement width. Yes, sir.
So you, that's going to be try, you're trying to handle that before the next-
Correct.
In March. Okay. Any further comment? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're into item number F, public comments. Mr. John Anderson. Just a reminder, you have three minutes. And if you're sitting out there with your cell phone on, please put it on mute or cut it completely out.
I'm here tonight to speak especially to you commissioners. My name is Johnny Anderson. I am a native and a resident of Beaufort County. I have been all of my life. I am the uncle of Cory Edward Anderson. I am the brother of his father. I'm employed by FedEx in Greenville, and I live right here in Washington, like I said, and I have all of my life been in Beaufort County. I was raised up to believe in, in my, to believe in family, to believe in the Lord, and to believe in my country. And I have lived that way all of my life. Tonight, if you want to know the reason I'm here, I'm here to stand in the gap for my nephew Cory Edward Anderson. Cory died undeservedly and unnecessarily while he was in the custody of the Beaufort County Jail. He was serving a 30-day sentence for a DUI, and it's the only time Cory had ever been incarcerated was the time that he was in the jail. Proverbs 31, verses eight and nine says to speak on behalf of those who can't speak for themselves. And that's what I'm doing tonight because Cory can't speak for himself, and his dad couldn't find it in himself to be here to speak for him either. So as his uncle, I'm here speaking for him tonight. Me, his dad, and I'm sure Cory wouldn't want to know the answer to these questions that I'm going to ask you guys tonight. And I have more questions than the ones that I'm going to ask tonight. And I'll be back, and I'll present them to you at another time. We have been seeking information from the Beaufort County Jail and the sheriff since Cory died on May the 8th. We are yet to get the information that we've been seeking. Part of the information we've been asking for is simply public policy on what is to take place when a person gets sick enough in jail that they're to be taken to the hospital. That's one of the things that we've been asking for, is that policy. A letter has been taken to the sheriff's department, a letter's been taken to one of the county commissioners, a letter's been taken to the county attorney's office, and we still don't have the answer to that question. One of the requests we have besides that is the, the rest of the paperwork that was filed when Cory was admitted to the jail, which we have a right to. We have all the forms, we've been through the clerk of court, we've jumped through the hoops, we've done everything that we've been told that we need to do to get any information that belonged to Cory. Cory's not here to get it, so his dad stands in his behalf, and his dad is not able to get it either. And these are, these are some of the questions that I have, that the family has, and that, that his dad has. Of course, what I said was, why can't we get that information when some of it is even public policy and all of it is rightfully his? Why Cory was allowed to get deadly sick while he was in the jail before he was taken to the hospital? Cory was taken to the hospital on Sunday, and he died on Monday. Why was the family not notified when Cory was admitted to the jail? If they had emergency contacts, why wasn't the family notified? Why wasn't the family notified the next day on Monday when Cory was so sick that he would die that afternoon? That's the question we have. Why was Cory left to die alone, by himself, in the hospital and never see one of his family members when they knew, they had to know how sick Cory was? He was in the hospital, he had been in the jail prior to that, he was in the custody of the Beaufort County Jail, they had a guard there with him the whole time. Why was the family not notified? Why were they not called? Another question that I've got, my brother's got, is why does the sheriff still refuse to meet with us, with me and my brother? The deputy was informed and asked to speak to the sheriff and tell him that me and my brother only would be the ones that would meet, and we would let him know the questions that we were going to ask him when we met. Why does he still refuse to meet with us even if we've given him the terms on which we want to meet? Why was Cory shackled to the bed as sick as he was in the hospital when he was too sick to get up? Why was he still shackled to the bed? These are questions you may not understand it because you may have never had anybody in this position, but if you had, you would understand it. And if you haven't, then I want you to understand a little bit more tonight than you knew before I came. Why does my brother continue to wait? It's been May the 8th when he died. He was, he was taken in on April the 28th, but why does my brother have to continue to wait day in, day out, can't sleep at night, can't have any peace during the day because his 35-year-old son died while in the custody of the jail? And he died alone because nobody, nobody was willing or nobody took the time to call the family? Why were we told after the first meeting with, with the deputy and with the jailer and with me and my family members? Why were we told in that meeting that they would talk to us as many times as we wanted? They would answer any questions that they can answer and all that we, that we wanted to be answered? Why after that first meeting were we only allowed to talk to Chief Deputy Rose? Why was that? Why, why couldn't we talk to the jailer again? Why couldn't we talk to the sheriff? Why couldn't we talk to somebody that cared about Cory dying? So to you commissioners, if you were here in the last meeting, I know this came up, my question to you guys, and I don't say this with any ill will or any malice, but I do say it with passion. Why have you guys heard, if you were here and you heard about my nephew dying and dying in the custody of the jail and nobody saying anything or doing anything about it to comfort the family, to give the family answers? Why hasn't the family heard from any of you? That's my question that I ask you tonight. And then I'll, I'll end with this right here. As a citizen of the county, me and my family, we've been citizens of this county all of our lives. We've lived by the law, we've loved our families, we've done the things that we feel like that we should do as being good citizens, supported the county, supported our country. I believe with all my heart that we have the right to know the answers to these questions, and I want to know why we can't get them. Does anybody not care about the fact that Cory died while he was in the custody of the Beaufort County Jail simply serving a 30-day sentence for a DUI? Is that okay with you? Is that okay with the county? Is that okay with anybody? If this was your son or your nephew or your family member, would it be okay for him to die in the custody of the jail for no good reason and nobody care or do anything about it? That's what I had to say to you tonight. Thank you for your time. Like I said, no ill will or no malice toward anybody, but we want answers to these questions. And, and I'll be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're down to item number G. Items for presentation. The first one is Greenlamp. Is Greenlamp presentation Angela Bates.
Good afternoon, good evening. Our executive director Angela Bates cannot be here this afternoon, so we are representing Greenlamp. I'm Mary Lovett, the Community Services Block Grant Director, and this is my assistant, Ms. Fay Taylor. A little brief issue on Greenlamp. Greenlamp Community Action is a private 501(c) nonprofit agency that provides services in Beaufort, Craven, Dublin, Greene, LeNore, and Pamlico and Pitt Counties. Our main office is at 309 Summer Avenue in Kinston, North Carolina. Greenlamp was chartered on September 16th, 1965 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community action agency. Greenlamp was established when two different anti-property programs merged, Green County Community Action Committee and Lamp Incorporated. The North Action Mobilization for Progress, thus the organization of Greenlamp. Since 1965, Greenlamp has provided services to low-income residents of Greene and the North Counties and since expanded services to other eastern North Carolina counties to include Beaufort, Craven, Dublin, Pitt, and Pamlico Counties. The agency's first programs were a CSBG, Self-Sufficiency Project, Head Start with Workforce Programs, and the JPTA, Welfare to Work, Workforce Investment, and Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act to follow over the next 45 years. Greenlamp has operated a variety of other programs during its 50 years to include after-school programs, Food Savage Project, Homeless Assistant Project, the Tyler III C Congress Nutrition, Tyler III Bean Transportation, Tyler III for Health Promotion Services, CPNL Fan Heath Relief, R.I.P. Four Housing Project, Low-Income Housing Corporation Pre-Development Activity, the Weatherization Assistant Program, USDA Surplus and Food Distribution Program, the NC Black Caucus Tyler V Senior Employment Program, Youth Services Summer Grant, the NC DHR Family Ties Program, the Elder and Disabled Transportation Assistant Program, and the Green Home and Community Care Block Grant. Greenlamp is a community action agency committed to having a major impact on combating poverty, empowering the poor and disadvantaged, and utilizing resources to assist residents in achieving upward mobility. Greenlamp's mission is to be dedicated to providing services to the citizens of eastern North Carolina with the emphasis on achieving self-sufficiency. Greenlamp is committed to determining and adhering to the needs of children, individuals, and families, and assisting them to become self-sufficient and self-reliant. Greenlamp advocates for less fortunate, provide services for the community, empower through education, implement programs that impact poverty. Greenlamp currently has four programs. We operate Head Start, Early Head Start, the Community Service Block Grant, the Workforce Innovation and Community Opportunities Act, and we currently are now in operation of the Foster Grandparent Program. And Ms. Fay Taylor will give you a little bit of information about the action program we operate with the CSBG.
Good evening. I'm here to tell you what we as in Beaufort and Pitt County, and right now we're in Beaufort and Pitt County, all four counties, but I'm serving Beaufort and Pitt County. At present, we have a budget of $1,309,000. We work with a number of 200 families. We work with them in the areas of self-sufficiency. We work, try to find them jobs, send them to school, build self-esteem, work very closely with them. We are going to have a shortage this year. The grant is going to be cut for '18, '19. We're in right now, we're working with 200 families. Come July 1st, we'll be only working with 100 families, and the budget is like $672,099. So it's a tremendous cut, but we strive to work with the families to help them help themselves. It's not a giveaway program. It's something to build self-esteem, to help them to become self-realized in the community, to get off of the system. And we work very well with them, and we love doing it. Any questions?
The 672,000, is that for Beaufort and Pitt or just Beaufort?
No, that's for all four counties.
All four counties.
Yes.
If I remember correctly, I think the number for Beaufort County that was in our material last month was a little over 100,000?
Yes.
A little over 100,000.
We'll be working with 13 clients here in Beaufort starting July. Right now, we're working with 28.
Okay, so it's 13.
Yes, in July. And present, we're working with 28. And the budget figure here, well, we said with that, but it's much more money spent in Beaufort County because Love said, the needs of the people. So we do what we can to help them help themselves.
Other questions?
I just have one. What is the source of your funding?
Our monies is federal, going down through the state in the, in the form of our G, our block grant. And the community action agency, they receive 90% of the monies that's sent from the federal to the state. And then the other 5% is for administration, and the other 5% is for limited-purpose agencies.
Other, other questions? I, we took a vote at, it was in the consent agenda last month, and we did the approval, what we needed to do. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Okay, item number two under items for presentation is the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office update. Sheriff Ernie Coleman and Chief Deputy Rose.
Good evening. I'll begin my presentation. About a year and a half ago, I believe, I came in here and gave a speech with about a three-page talk about the, defending the integrity of my office. Fast forward a year and a half, and I felt it necessary to come back, and I guess this is defending the integrity of my office, part two. I'm not planning to come back much. I know y'all are relieved on that, and I'm only going to come back when I need to, when my employees are being attacked and false statements are being made. I've brought some information in fact for you, the review. After this, you can contact me or the chief and find our references and have access to all the information I'm going to give you tonight in more detail. There have been several statements made by the county commissioners in the last couple of months that have been derogatory and untrue against myself, my personnel, and the office of sheriff. And I'm trying to catch something, by the way. It's not a flu, so you have to excuse my voice. I'm not going to spread it to you. The office of sheriff that I would like to address tonight, most have been made, of course, most of them have been made by Commissioner Hood Richardson and Jerry Langley. However, several other statements have been made by other commissioners because I believe they have been misinformed and led astray. If you bear with me, I'm going to start, this is mostly a presentation for the people and the people in T.G. Land that's going to be seeing this for the month of February, that y'all usually use for your advantage and for your bullying, most of the time, mostly Hood Richardson.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll start with a quick history of the office of the sheriff. Duties and the powers of the county sheriff. The office of the county sheriff dates back to at least 900 A.D. in England. The sheriff had always been charged with protecting the rights and property of the sovereign. When the colonists came to North America, the sheriff came too. He was still to protect the king's interests. After the American Revolution, the citizens became sovereign as individuals. The office of county sheriff remained. At that point, it became the duty and authority of the sheriff to protect the rights and property of the sovereign citizens from any unlawful action. The citizens then became the sheriff's boss. I'm going to get to the main point in a few minutes, just bear with me. I'll go over some of this laws and rules. Number two, it's North Carolina Supreme Court rulings in several cases that you're all familiar with. I've sent you all emails over the last three years pertaining to these laws and rules that are pertaining to the Supreme Court rulings, the North Carolina laws that are written, and also case laws due courts that y'all seem to ignore and are in contempt of continuously. The Supreme Court of North Carolina issued three opinions on January 29th, 2016, not in 1895, and not in 1995, but in 2016. So it's a recent Supreme Court ruling which issues dealing with the office of the sheriff, and it was several issues at hand, and you've all got this. It was lawsuits that went all the way up to the Supreme Court dealing with the power of the sheriff to fire employees. And there was other issues several months, several, a couple of years back where a sheriff had several employees that he hired, deputies, and they were driving into another county with their issued patrol cars. And that sheriff, like myself, says, you know, I look for people who have got it, got the talent and got it. And when you find somebody across county lines, you're not going to require, say, you know what, for $3,000 extra dollars- know what, for $3,000 extra dollars, I'll hire you, but you got to sell your house, make your wife quit her work job, and move into Beaufort County. Well, that's what started a couple of years ago with the sheriff out west, and we had the information. I'm gonna try to cut this short, try to. And so the county said, no, you're not gonna have deputies ride in another county. You're gonna keep the vehicles here. The sheriff said, no, I don't work for y'all. Law backs it up, and I'm gonna hire people, and they're gonna drive where I let them to drive for the integrity of the office running the sheriff. But the county commissioner sued. And y'all can get this if you want to later. And it went through the courts and ended up in the Supreme Court, North Carolina, Supreme Court of North Carolina. That case was settled with an issue from the court, and I'm gonna read it here. And then it, this same court made these same issues, the same rulings recently in 2016 dealing with the sheriff that was sued by the county and employees over hiring and firing, and they said for political purposes. That was never stated in the law about the political purpose, but that was one of the persons that fired, said he got fired because he was a Democrat or Republican or whichever, and the sheriff was the opposite and fired him for that reason. I'll move on. January 2016, the Supreme Court of North Carolina ruled in favor of the sheriff's office. The lawsuit had two critical decisions made by the Supreme Court. These cases, one, quote from Supreme Court, "The sheriff's office is not a program or department of a county. Therefore, deputy sheriffs and other employees of a sheriff's office are not county employees" for the purpose of General Statute 153A99. Second ruling, there were several on here, quote, additionally, Supreme Court holds, Supreme Court said, "By standing in the elected sheriff's shoes, a deputy sheriff fills the role in which loyalty to the elected sheriff is necessary to ensure that the sheriff's policies are carried out, and also for the integrity of the office and for the trust Y'all were sent a copy of that this past year, and I've got the copy I sent to you. I'm just allowing the people to know as we go that what the law says, and I'm in law enforcement 36 years, and I enforce the law and I go by the law. If the laws change, I'm gonna go along with the laws. If you can get the laws changed in the Constitution, bless you, I'll go along with it all the way, I've always had. But most of the people in this commissioners are in contempt of the law, and I'll continue. Two A, Supreme Court rulings. Here's a memo after that ruling came out from Supreme Court that I wrote, wanted to bury the hatchet. I know that the sheriff by law complies with the Fiscal Control Act. The Fiscal Control Act rules these things, what they supposed to do with budget money, fiscal money, government money. So when that ruling come out, I didn't applaud it and jump up and high-five and belly bump. We already knew, that's been the law forever. It was just now recently ruled by the Supreme Court. So I sent a memo to all of you, to the Board of Commissioners and County Office Personnel dated February the 10th, the month after that Supreme Court ruling come out. And I'm entitled that reference moving forward, and I'll read it. During my first year in office, there were several comments, discussions, and other issues whether the sheriff's office employees are county employees. The sheriff's office is bound to county government by funding matters only. The Board of Commissioners are required by North Carolina General Statute to reasonably fund the office of the sheriff. I feel I have been consistent and fair with my dealings with the county office personnel and members of the Board of County Commissioners. I wanna work with you, but I don't work for you. The sheriff must comply, I must comply, statutory responsibilities which are set out by law and answers only to the people who elect me. I'm now confident that a lot of these issues from the past have been resolved, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with everyone in the next couple of years to improve the services too and the safety of the county's residents while strengthening the integrity of the sheriff's office. And then I ended, please let me know if you have any questions. Respectfully, Ernie Coleman, Sheriff. You all got a copy of that. But it didn't end there, of course. Arrogance prevails. For the next five months, from February to July, we're inundated, and I've got copies of it on video. It's all on video, these quotes, I'm not gonna misquote any of you, it's all gonna be quotes from every one of you. Fast forward for five months, we get inundated, or my office does, myself, with misquotes, lies, misinformation, playing the TV land, letting stuff get on TV land for a whole month and play on TV land, thinking that somebody's gonna come back and rebuttal it, and y'all not worth coming back and rebuttal the lies that y'all spread about my office. So in July 2016, five months after this, it bottlenecked again with a combination of, you remember that debacle, County Courthouse Security, stuff that come up? Well, fast forward to that, you had a Superior Court Judge who attempted to give me a court order, and I told him pretty much where he can put that court order. And then county commissioners who attempted to force me to take courthouse security unfunded, liberal, unfunded mandates, like most liberals do. And I couldn't believe it, so I fought back, they drew first blood. We went back and forth on a few words, and ended up, you see who's got courthouse security? It ain't the sheriff, and I'm not bragging about it, I'm just saying, I went by the law. I go by the law. Try to shove it down my throat. And in that letter, which I will not read, this is the three-page rebuttal I did in July of 2016, it was defending the integrity of my office, it's still online, but it goes on and on about their mandates and against the law and their moot statements, you know what moot is. But I will read one statement on there to build my case again about the law, that most of these laws, which is incredible, I don't really watch the county commissioners meeting, it's not that I don't care, it's just that I don't care. Chief Rose will get on there a lot of times, and he'll see stuff that y'all saying, he'll call me as often, let me see it, and let me hear. Rest of it, I don't hear. But under that presentation I gave you back in July 2016, one of the many things I wrote was statute and law again, and it says, "Under Chapter 17E, 17E-1, Findings in Policy, the General Assembly finds that the sheriff is the only officer of local government that is required by the North Carolina Constitution. The sheriff, in addition to his criminal justice responsibilities, is the only officer who is also responsible for the courts of the state and acting as their bailiff and marshal. The sheriff administers and executes criminal and civil justice and acts as the ex-officio detention officer. The deputy sheriff has been held by the Supreme Court of this state to hold an office of special trust and confidence, acting in the name of and with the same powers as his principal, the elected sheriff." That was sent to you. While I was spending a lot of precious time preparing for this again, like I've done so many times, preparing for rebuttals from moot statements made by this board through their arrogance and ignorance of the law, well, I won't, let me take that back, I don't believe you're ignorant to the law. I think you know, you've got a tax-paid lawyer over there, and you've got a county manager who's, in my opinion, is the best county manager since Don Davenport was here years ago. Not because he likes me or for me, but every time you ask him questions about these things that y'all asked in the last couple of months, he's told you the truth. You know, it's just what the law says this, and of course, Hood Richardson, after you take the law and the Constitution, says, I don't care what the law says, the sheriff's department issues papers and answers thus. That's his answer on the Constitution and the laws of the land. Local Government Finance Act. I'm not gonna try to give y'all any information on it, it's right here, you've got it. The good thing about this whole thing is, I learned some stuff too, I read it, and I'm not that sharp, so I had to read it twice. Went through the whole thing. G S, General Statute 159-1 through General Statute 159-42, Subchapter 3, Budgets and Fiscal Control. I told you what fiscal control is, that's about money and only. Supreme Court's ruling, stay with me, that the only connection between me and the county commissioners and county office is money, period. So I read this, and I get through it, and you've got a lot of responsibilities as county commissioner, you've got a lot of them. I don't begrudge you anything on it. You've got $60 million of taxpayers' money that you're supposed to give out to the citizens of this county. That's a lot of money, a lot of responsibility. And I'll shock you. I'm satisfied with my budget. Really? About the laws of Fiscal Control Act, and what I learned in sheriff's training and standards during my first year sheriff, three years ago, I learned about the Fiscal Control Act and the connection between a sheriff, elected sheriff of office, not a sheriff's department, it's a sheriff's office, but we all say department, we've been saying it a lot, it never has been a department. And I go by that only. And you need, right now, the spring's coming up, and what's coming up? The workshops, the budget workshops, and my people are gonna be presenting their budget and what we need. A lot of it, some of it's copy and paste, Syreese, but then you've got a lot of those special stuff that comes up, vests or weapons or gets cars, that comes up. Anyway, I read through this Fiscal Control Act, the laws that govern you, and I only found the Office of Sheriff listed one time. I think I got it the second time I read it. And it's under 159-9 Budget Officer, and it don't really apply to this county because it talks about counties that have a budget officer or doesn't have a manager form of government. You have a manager form of government, sitting right there, Mr. Brian Aligut. But it talks about the county and your responsibility, and it's a law that gives you authority. It's like it does the sheriff, the laws give me authority and tells me what I can and can't do. And this statute, it tells that the budget officer serves at the will of the governing board, you're the governing board, and the county's having a manager form of government, the county's manager does that. Counties not having the manager form of government may impose the duties, that's given a law to give you a power, well, like laws do. Counties not having a manager form of government may impose the duties of budget officer upon the county finance officer or any other county officer or employee except the sheriff. And why would they write that in there? Because when people write laws, the people in Raleigh or everywhere else, they try to stay consistent with the Constitution and the laws and everything else. So, but I'm sure y'all already knew that was in there. I'm not gonna take nothing away from you, I'm sure you knew it was in there. But talking about the budget, like I said, I embrace it. Every single year, every single year for three years I've been here, we put in the budget and fought. That's what department heads do, the sheriff. You fight for your budget, you fight for your people, what you need, need. And a couple of years I fought, and we'll go to that in a minute about the vehicles. Yeah, that was way behind, we need like over half a million dollars or more to come home because it's been lacking for years. Now, we got a workable vehicle program. Vehicles run up, you fill it, money goes back into the county office, it don't go in the office, and we go to ebb and flow of the cars. Well, all three years, I've got, pretty much after it's over, said we're satisfied to get what we need for the safety of the public for my office. At the end of that year, every year, I've turned money back into the state taxpayers' pocket for my budget, every year. So I asked you, what's the problem? If the laws say that your only connection with the Office of the Sheriff is fiscal finance and everything, why am I hearing statements from this commissioner such as, and they're called moot, like I said, y'all know what moot means. Moot means deprived of practical significance, and that's from the court. So I'm hearing moot statements instead of saying about the budget and money and sheriff wants this, we're hearing statements from commissioners like Hood Richardson. The sheriff's department just serves papers and does what we tell them to do. And I think on the last meeting, or the one before, he stated, well, the School of Governments just recently made some opinions that we'll look at in two of the parts oversight for the sheriff. But I'll say, Mr. Richardson, anytime if they did do that, I don't know if they did, but they did, let me know when a handful of people at the School of Government would trump the North Carolina Constitution and the state laws and case laws. You let me know when that happens. And I'm just listening off, I'm not attacking anybody here, really, it sounds like I am, but I'm, statements, ignorant statements. So, Gary Brand, "Well, I will see if we can make a take-home schedule for the deputies and their take-home cars." Really? Ain't happened, it ain't gonna happen. You can vote 7-0, and you'll have a court order on you very shortly, I've already talked to court, you have no deal with the operation of my office. Wake up. Jerry Evans, and he means, well, he's a new guy, I like him a lot, but he fell into that wolf pack and attacking the sheriff. He says, "Let's give him a chance to write a vehicle policy if he ain't got one, then let him present it to us." Ain't gonna happen. Are you kidding me? Policy's been around, I've been along for 36 years, it's always there. Lexipol, we're getting it, there's policies for everything from sneezing to farting in my, in my policy, everything, and we go by it by the book, comprehensive policies. So you speak, and I don't want to use the word ignorant because that means, sounds stupid, and I don't mean that, but let me use the word uninformed. But yet you put, y'all put that two cents in while on TV land, and it plays. And I've got to admit, the first year I was in office, it was aggravating as heck, because y'all make those statements, I go out to church and civic groups and everything, and these constabants say, hey, you gonna let them do that to you, and they're gonna, and I'd have to explain, I did it at least a couple of hundred times for the first year. I don't work for the county commissioner, they're moot statements, they can, oh, they're lying? I said, yes, they're lying. They're either, it's either one of two things, it's either you're ignorant to the laws and rules, which I don't think you are, or you're doing it on purpose. Now, you let the people know that when I leave here tonight, which one it is. Fiscal Control Act, stick to it, I'm gonna stick to running my office, you stick to running county budget. Moving on. I'm really not attacking you, Mr. Hood, but I'm gonna go on with yours a little bit. In the December, and these are all from videotapes, of course, I'm not saying what you said, I'm quoting what you said. December, had Charlie put them on there, this is bullying, this is called political bullying, and you're very good at it. What you do is you get on TV land when nobody's here, and you make statements and lies about them, and let it play on TV land for a whole month so they got the answer to their constituents and people out in the world, and laugh about it, thinking they're gonna come back the next month and rebuttal it. You're not worth that, I'm not coming back every month and give a statement like this. Can I hear amen on that? Y'all don't want to be up here every month. But you continue to do this lies, and I'll give you examples of your bullying. Thing, when we went to the sheriff's conference, and of course, the governors there are different ones, we network like y'all do, we bring, I would say about bringing money in here, I'm on the government's crime commission, et cetera, I'm not here to pat myself on the back, but we go to that. That was brought up at the meeting that night, and we're at that, at that meeting, but Richardson says, surprised that the sheriff department didn't have the courtesy to show up, the accusations we're making against him. I think the sheriff should have the courtesy to the public to explain rather than say, I can do what I wanna do. I'm very disappointed that no one from thee, and it stopped, there's always, they're always here, aren't they? Until you get them on something, then they decide to go hide, which they're doing today. We ain't hiding from you, Hood, we're right here. And I'm gonna ask you to be a good sport about this, and I'm gonna do this and move on. Here's an example of your bullying, this is an example of your bullying. And I don't want you to respond to this, this is your dojo, and you probably will, and I guarantee you, you won't be able to do it tonight, you will respond tonight, you ain't gonna be able to help yourself. Example would be to tell you half truths, so I'm gonna ask you a question from me and the taxpayers, but I don't want you to answer it tonight, I want it to be next month, let it play on TV land for a month, okay? Be a good sport. Myself and the taxpayers right here wanting to know why, with all the modern technology in the world, with video webinars, that you can go in a room and see people and be right in a room with them, why you felt that you and a handful of other county people had to go all the way to Los Angeles, California for a county commissioners retreat? All the way to Los Angeles, California. And while in Los Angeles, California, we all know that those county meetings don't last no more than three or four, five hours a day. And the rest of the time, you're out visiting the stars' homes, and then you're eating expensive meals on the per diem that the taxpayers give you here in the county, we know that happens, without a doubt. And so the county wants to know how much money you spend on this vacation you took and how many stars you met, and why you think you had to go to Los Angeles, and then you, of course, you went back through Las Vegas, and you tell them about that. And I heard you use per diem then. So that's my explanation, but I don't want explanations, taxpayers don't want it, they want you to let it play on the loop and ask a bunch of questions, and then next month, if you feel like, come back next month and explain it. That's your bullying, and that's your procedures. I'll move on. Number six. Commissioner Langley, statements, and I'm gonna say they're political statements without a doubt. For three years until now, you know what's happening this month, February, right? House, Senate, sheriff, everybody files for office. House, Senate, sheriff, everybody files for office. Yet these things from Jerry Langley have come up in the last couple of months, hard. The sheriff's corrupt, and we all know he's on our witness team, without a doubt. And I got proof of it right here.
Hold on, hold on. Show me the proof right now. Right now, show me the proof.
I'm going to give it to you in a minute.
If you can't, if you can't show it to me now, you're lying.
Mr. Commissioner, do I have the floor?
Yes.
Can I go without being interrupted?
Are you, what can I?
Control your members, so you'll...
Yes.
Not necessarily you can't.
You've got, you've got 15 minutes total, so...
All right. Well, I'm going to continue. Jerry Langley, on the last commissioner's meeting, the one before that, just to show the, the lack of experience from the sheriff, or the sheriff can't handle his budget and all this, he says, and I'll quote him with his finger up, so professional, "As long as I am commissioner, I will never vote to approve another unmarked vehicle unless it's specifically for the drug unit. I've been told that once they get the vehicle, they'll do whatever they want to with it. They can do that once, one time, because the following year, I'll make another adjustment." Well, let me show you how ignorant that statement is, and lack of planning. Trying to get in my backyard, management, and you need to carry, worry about your backyard. Back when I came, became sheriff in December of 14, between December 14 and March of 15, we had three major weather events. Ice snow, if I remember some of them. I found out shortly after that, looking at the budget and learning about the budget and being the sheriff, that we spent thousands of dollars for rental vehicles. Rental vehicles, four-by-four trucks and other stuff to put our deputies in position. We did it again in 15. At the same time, I've come up with a plan with the, with the chief, and we looked at it. We said, well, what are the prices? The prices were about the same for the pickup trucks, they are the Dodge Chargers. So we got to looking at it, the money we spent, and also, these deputies were being loaded in these four-by-four trucks and spread out throughout the county and going to calls with no blue lights, nothing but hazard flashers. Going up people's house saying, sheriff's office, sheriff, with flashlights, responding to calls, can't stop cars, and this is how we were handling weather events, ice, snow, storms. So in planning, I put forth a plan that eventually we can get it, not overnight, of course, nothing goes overnight in government, any government. So started buying some vehicles. Four-by-four trucks, chief got one, captain's got one, tenant's got one. And if you think about, these guys are a lot younger than me, they don't want to drive trucks, even though you hear it from the commissioners and all you hear from Ed Booth the last couple of years is Tahos.
That's right.
They're driving Tahos.
That's right.
Oh, they're driving Tahos.
That's right.
That shows his lack of management and ignorance. Because what happened is, on the last year or so, we finally started getting pickup trucks, fought for them, and we get them. So fast forward this past January, last month and month four, what did we have? Major snow event. Y'all remember, shut us down. What did we do? We had these trucks, blue lights in them, stationed in Bellhaven, Pintown, Washington, Chalkawinity and Aurora with deputies in them. Not one incident did they not be able to respond to, not one. And they got there in a specific time, had vehicles, equipment, blue lights, took care of the county's safety, the county's... I'm responsible for, not you, me. Then turn around, we washed the grime off of them, the brine, cleaned them up, and ditched them back to the appropriate person. They go on, and we issue, we take equipment with it, back and forth to fire and rain, use it for all kinds of purposes. Also, those vehicles are going to last a lot longer than the standard deputy cars on the road, because they're not on the road with deputy miles. Their command staff's driving them. Them things will last anywhere from four to 10 years, depending on the use. So they're there. That's called foresight. That's called management. You're going to try it sometime. Mr. Langley's use of his office for elected, corrupted political purposes. A couple of months ago, he started, and I've got some quotes, but I'm going to move on and finish this up. He made several quotes about misuse of cars and putting on the thing, oh, he didn't stop by highway patrol and misuse of cars. Well, I took that seriously. And I looked it up and come to find out that the boy involved, he remembered everything's a video camera now, everybody's got a video camera. So the boy that stopped, a trooper Haddock, who's had a long history of problems on the patrol, it's documented. He stops one of my deputies, black deputy, Ken Hill, great guy, for no other reason, eight miles going by, and he was having to contempt the cop thing. This is on video, white officer, contempt the cop. On a sheriff deputy, he says, goes up there and, boy, what are you doing, blah, 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 and the rest of it's ugly. Ugly. I found that out later, so I called the patrol and said, look, this boy talked like this. They look into it, they didn't transfer it, just spanked him, said it's ugly. Got it on video. Jerry started that mess, getting rumors, and started, oh, misuse, misabuse, and the sheriff ain't operating his vehicle, political. Political, pure political. Now we fast forward to, I was hearing through the grapevine, everybody's got a grapevine, that that young man got transferred to Kinston, he did get transferred to Kinston, and that he was calling, this is the rumor I heard, and you know how rumors are, that he was calling county commissioners and telling them lies about that stop and misuse. And I said, really? So I called the state highway patrol, that I've been retired from for eight years, I still know what I'm on, and I filed a formal complaint. State up here, I said, I'm hearing that that boy is disgruntled because he got spanked for being misconduct and transferred, and he's calling the county commissioner, starting this, set up with Jerry Langley. They said, well, we'll take it as a formal complaint. They investigated. About two days later, they called me back. They put the boy under guarantee, if y'all know what guarantee is, that means this isn't a criminal investigation, you going to answer the truth or you going to get fired. Put him under guarantee and questioning. And he broke free, and the tenant told me, he said, you know what? He didn't call the county commissioner. I said, oh, okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I wasted y'all's time. I mean, that's what I was heard. He said, no, sir. He says that a Democratic candidate for sheriff, Al Whitney, called him and solicited the information about the traffic stop, and then he, Al Whitney, he gets with Jerry Langley and conspired to put it on the agenda for the county commissioner's meetings. Did I say more? Did I hear a bunch of, oh, I see now? How corrupt this is? Got information on it. It's written, it's documented with the patrol. You know what can take it? A subpoena. That's all you got to do, get a subpoena. You get every bit of, you're corrupt and you're about to run for office. That's upsetting. I almost want to support you, just to get you the hell out of this office here.
In such language.
And I'm about to finish up. All right. Like I say, most, all the statements being made, I've already, when I'm a moot, Physical Control Act relating to government rescues, don't relate to me. It sounds like I've just told y'all, but I didn't. I've told nothing but the truth, absolute truth. And I am actually looking forward to the next couple of months of the workshops. Same thing, that's gone on for what, 100 years, been developed by law? Y'all look at what we got, and I will say this, chief will back me up on this, y'all do, no matter what you say, you look at our office more than you look at your departments that work for you. And I asked you to do that. Please do that. We put down everything from ink pens, anything else. You look at everything we got. That's what you should do. You've got $60 million taxpayer, and I pay, I got a house, and I'm, boy, I got a big taxpayer to pay. I pay it. I pay it, like the message, but we, we want you to come in here and quit making fools of yourself, spending time after time after time, saying the sheriff works for us, and we'll, we'll give him a take-home car, we'll give him a simple, do a policy. You're making fools of yourselves. Because I constantly hear it from the citizens. Those citizens are not confrontational. They're not going to come up to you and tell you that. You're going to sit there and ask them a question and say, yeah, you're doing a good job, and they walk away from you. But I'm hearing it from the civic groups and everywhere. They know it because three years I've been pushing it down everybody's throat, and they heard it, and they're saying, why are they saying that? They're making fools of themselves. You don't work for them. So I'm asking you to grow up, be professionals, and stop this crap. But we are going to work for you. That budget, we're entitled to that money, whether you say so or not. If you want to go back to 1895, Jerry, with some kind of laws that are in a book from 1895, give us two mules and a wagon or something, go ahead. But you're going to... And in closing, I want to tell you this, this is closing. I embrace the budget, but I will say, now I'm going to quit talking as a sheriff, talking as a citizen, real quick, this is in closing. Here, amen. I'll sit right here and listen to some of that stuff on the video, the last couple of meetings, and the chief called me down to listen to one, I thought he was calling me about another thing y'all said. I went down there, it want nothing to do with us, his chief left, and Bobby Parker stood up here, and I have never heard somebody talk to like that, call a crook, talk the way he's talking to, and, well, y'all, y'all ain't going to believe it because you don't believe what I say, but I'm telling you, your directors in the county offices, not me, I don't work for you. But they work for you, and they all talk junk about you. They high-five and belly-bump every time the chief and me come over here and do this. Because they working in a hostile working environment, where people like Hood Richardson and you people, they work in a hostile working environment, they can't stand you. You need to change your ways and stay on the books and do what the law... You've got a lawyer right over there that's paid by the taxpayer, you apparently ain't using him, or he's not worth his weight. And I don't think that's the chance. I think he's a good man. You need to listen to him in the county environment and get off my back. But I'll work with you all the way with the people of this county.
Thank you very much. We're not going to get into debate...
Mr. Chairman, I have one question that I want to ask the sheriff. Sheriff's walking out, he refuses to answer whether or not he has the right and the power to use county equipment for personal use. That's your money.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to let each commissioner, if they would like to make any comments, and I'm going to, I'm going to start with Commissioner Richardson.
I'm not going to say anything.
Okay.
I'll be back next month on the agenda to answer his question, though.
Okay. Mr. Evans. Mr. Booth.
I'll leave his integrity alone.
Mr. Langley.
I will. And I think that basically, what you here, sitting here, as well as the people in the audience, see exactly who our sheriff is. And he talks about the trooper belittling his officer, and then he repeatedly says B-O-Y, boy. So that lets you know he is quite comfortable using that term. One of the things that every commissioner has to do is, if there is misuse of county-owned property, we ought to put it where the public can hear it and respond to it. Yes, we can't tell the sheriff what to do. But as I said before, if there are problems, bring it to the forefront, allow people to see it and hear it, and then if he really and truly wants to be fair about it, all he needs to say is, I will check into it, and we'll come to resolution. Now, if he is such an informed, caring individual, why hasn't he answered the Andersons family's questions? Those are far more prevalent than what these commissioners are saying about him. That's where the rubber meets the road, when you're actually dealing with people and not propaganda. And that's all I have to say.
Amen.
Okay, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Any, anybody...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to say something.
Okay. Commissioner Buzzio.
We heard from the sheriff, we heard from some of the commissioners, I think it's time now to put everything aside and worry about the county, the law enforcement in this county, what needs to be done for the residents of the community. To back, to pick on each other solves nothing. We now should say, it's over, the discussion's over, and let's worry now about the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Booth.
Mr. Buzzio, I agree with you partially, but if you think it's over, you're not dreaming. You're having a nightmare.
Okay. I, we're down to items for consent. Is there any one of these items that you'd like to pull for further discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Langley, second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor of the consent items being approved, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote six to one. Okay, we're down to items for discussion. The first one is the revaluation update. Bobby?
Actually, Mr. Parker. Mr. Chairman.
Well, I saw Cindy, and she looked like she was getting ready to go up there.
I would have dressed different if I'd have known.
Bobby's got, Bobby's got the flu.
Okay.
So he called this morning.
He's been good. And his wife.
Oh, both of them.
This afternoon.
Well, thank you, Bobby, for not coming.
Basically, they wanted me to give you the information of what we got going forward. We were hoping for tomorrow, sometime in the afternoon, to get through with all the changes and everything that needs to be done, send the file to get the information put on the notices, to go out on Friday. But now, since Mr. Parker is sick, I think he kind of wants to have more input than being at home. So I'm not sure if the schedule is going to work that way. And we are waiting a little bit on the building that they're redoing over here for us to hold hearings in. And I think suddenly hadn't done all the wiring that they need to do. So that's basically where we are. We're kind of, we're almost ready, but starting gunning, going to be pulled until Mr. Parker says so.
So you're, you're saying that would be one day next week, is what you...
Well, we were going to send them on Friday. Typically, by Monday or Tuesday, people would be getting them, and Wednesday. I don't think they all go out at one time, they go out in shifts when they mail them, they're mailed out. So they're handling that.
This is the revale on the real property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What about personal property? Do you revale it?
That's county.
And when would you plan to start hearings? Or hearings with the individuals, the first round of assessments, when people are dissatisfied with whatever they're...
Typically, it's about two to three days after they get their notice and start calling. We'll have schedules put up, and people, you know, ready to, to talk to the people with whatever their concern is.
How many people are you going to have available?
We can have as many as we want within...
So it depends on how many times the phone rings?
Exactly.
And these, is this is going to be your staff and not our staff?
Right.
Okay.
We're going to continue to stay in the building we're in with two people answering phones, and then in this building over here, we're going to have two, and if we have to have more, we can do something different. I think they're trying to put another line in this building. There's only two lines going into the building, same thing in our building. So we're kind of limited, you know, with people, without getting another line in that building.
Do you know what phone numbers are given on the notices to...
It's going to go to one number, I believe, and then it... It'll roll over as that is busy, is what I understand.
So which number is it going to?
The revale office.
Revale, and where does it roll over to?
Well, it would come to ours in the other building over there, not this one, and then it would flip over to the other ones that they'll have in line over here.
So it'll flip to this building over here from that building?
Well, actually, from the building that we're in on Second Street over there.
Right. Right. To the building over here?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So you're going to have, how many phones? Four?
Well, we have four right now, and I don't know if they've got the other lines. They were talking about getting another one in. I don't know if it's another two line. That would give us six phones.
And when do you anticipate being finished with the first round of?
Depends on how many people come out.
Okay. Are you giving them a time limit to call you? Are you suggesting a time limit? I know there's not a limit. They can complain anytime they want to, but?
Right.
In order to expedite it?
No, we don't.
You're not putting that on?
Nothing on the notice about that.
Then, once that first round is done, those who have complaints that are addressed by staff will get another document in the mail showing if the valuation has been changed or not?
Yeah, anybody that appeals will get a notice of some sort.
Okay.
Saying you've got a change, there's no change. And then there'll be information there if they decide to go to the Board of Equalization of what the steps are to take that forward.
And you're looking at being finished with the first round of complaints within, what, two months?
Possibly. It just depends. You don't know.
Yeah, I know. Sometimes our phone rings a lot, too, when this happens.
Oh, yeah. I can imagine.
The, one of the things the public should know about this particular process and why this is important, you're going to, it's a lot easier to get a revale changed if you complain when you get that first mailing in the mail. The reason is, you're dealing with the people who went out and did the fieldwork and did the revaluation, and they can be a lot more informal in addressing your complaint. They can also very quickly find whether they have made an error or not, or they can go back and have a second look at the property. There are no politicians involved in the first round of complaining. Gee, isn't that wonderful? Don't you think that would make things move a little faster and smoother? So I, you know, I have people during the two revales, or maybe three that I've been involved in since I've been a commissioner, people come to me months after the whole show is over with, and they're complaining about their taxes, and they didn't get fair treatment, and this, and that, and the other. And you say, "Where were you when this thing was going on?" So, you know, to the public, I would say, "If you have a complaint, make it when you get this first mailing. It's a lot easier on you, and it's a lot easier on everybody else." Now, ultimately, you'll be able to complain to the commissioners. If, well, it's not the commissioners. It's actually the Board of Adjustment, of which the commissioners serve on. If you're still dissatisfied after you've been through a round with the people who did the appraisal, our contractors, and maybe you've been to the tax office, too, and talked to them, and you're still dissatisfied, you can bring your complaint to the commissioners, to the Board of Adjustment.
Equalization and review.
Equalization and review. That's right, not adjustments. And we, thank you. And we will, we will take a look at that, and if warranted, we can make an adjustment on it. It's going to be a lot harder to get equalization and review to make an adjustment than it will be to convince people on the first round when you get your first notice to make an adjustment. And the reason is, we're going to have to conform to everybody else in the county, and we're going to have to consider, since it's a new revale, if we adjust two or three of these things and we go the wrong way, then we're going to have 300 more people in here who are going to say, "Well, you did it for him. I'm in the stand in the same shoes. You're going to have to do it for me." That means you're going to have to have a really good argument toward the end. So please do the easy thing. Talk to our contractors about this. You guys have done, since I've been here, two or three revuations. I had to figure it out. But at any rate, they have always been very easy to work with and very understanding and very truthful. They can't make a change, they'll tell you they can't make a change, and they'll tell you why they can't make a change. So please, please complain early and often, not later and later.
I'm assuming the other thing that we're waiting on is for Sudden Lake to totally finish before we send them out, since we're going to have calls coming in that'll roll over to that office. And I agree with Commissioner Richardson. When you get the notice, after you look at the notice and you look at the valuation, make sure you look, I think the insert is blue that has the instruction. I say blue. It's, okay. But look at the instructions and make sure that you go ahead and proceed and call the contractor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're down to item number two, the industry-ready building update. Martin?
He's in the lobby. Good evening again. So I'm here to give you an update on the industry-ready building, which was completed at the end of December. And I'd like to thank you all first for committing the funds that you did, the $116,000. It is much easier to sell something that exists than try and create it in the client's mind if we just have land for sale. It's very difficult. So thank you all for doing this. As I said, the $116,000 was committed, reimbursable at $35,000 per fiscal year. In fiscal year 1617, there was $6,278.50 paid. And in fiscal year 17, 2017, 2018, there was $7,188.14 paid, for a total of $13,466.64. This money was spent on the fire monitoring service, which is basically serviced so, you know, if the fire alarm goes off, people will be notified, so the building doesn't burn down, legal fees, and then also mortgage interest. In terms of renting or selling the property to date, we don't have anybody who's currently got an offer on the building. But since we've had plans for the building and since it's been constructed, I've sent it out to clients 12 times. Those clients are either people who contacted me directly or through the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina or the Northeast Alliance typically. Sometimes they'll come in through our company or other sources. Just depends on who has connection to the client. We've had three visits since the building has been constructed. All have shown interest, but as I say, nobody to date has made an offer on the building. And we have four visits scheduled within the first quarter here for 2018. So it has increased the activity on the building, sorry, in the county. We also have the, as you can imagine, we have the building featured on the website of the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. It's on LoopNet, and it's on our own website, obviously. And we did do a good deal with Business Expansion Magazine and got it in on the North Carolina section of their recent release. Actually, at the retreat, I'll be showing you more detail on all of these things. So that's where we stand currently. It is a beautiful building. If anybody wants to come out and take a look at it, I'd only be too honored to have you out there. So, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Martin. All right, we're down to item number three, open meetings lawsuit. Commissioner Richardson?
I have some comments to make on this. I'm told repeatedly that I can't talk about the lawsuit. Actually, I can talk about the fact that we have a lawsuit. I can't talk about the lawsuit. And this particular lawsuit is the one that was brought by the, I think it's called the Good Government Committee, or a government committee against the county having to do with the open meetings law. Most business people that go into a lawsuit, you manage a lawsuit just like you would a business situation. And that is, we have the lawsuit on us. How do we handle this from the standpoint of money? And looking after the county's money is what those of us that are commissioners are supposed to do. We're not supposed to let our emotions get involved in it. And this is why the smart advice when people have a lawsuit is go hire a lawyer to help you with, because he knows how the ropes work, and he can be a lot more objective than you can be. And that's why you need third-party help with these things. From a business standpoint, we're in a lawsuit that doesn't involve money, other than what we pay to the lawyers. The county cannot be fined under the present law within this lawsuit. The only thing that the county can have put upon it is some kind of an injunction, "I'm not a lawyer," or a legal order, or something that says, "Don't do this again. If you did it, don't do it again." So from commissioner's standpoint and managing the county's money, we need to figure a way to get out of this by spending as little money of your money as we possibly can. Now, this is public information. The county has already appropriated $50,000 to defend a lawsuit that the worst thing that can happen to us is, we have to pay the opposing party's attorney bill if we lose. Usually, in a lawsuit, usually, the rule of thumb, it's going to cost us just as much money as it will them. So if we budget $50,000 for a lawsuit and we lose, and we spend the $50,000, they're going to spend $50,000. And in most, almost every one of the lawsuits of this kind, that, excuse me, that's a non-damaged lawsuit in government that has to do with the open meetings law, they are all settled the same way. The judge issues an order that, he's not going to give you, think of it if you were the judge, and you had this county that was accused of not filing open meetings laws. Do you think that he's going to let you walk out of that lawsuit and not anything happen? No, he's going to issue some kind of an order that says, "If you did it, don't do it again." And if the lawsuit looks like it has any merit to it at all, because the law is written this way, if you bring one of these suits, the county has to pay the opposing attorney if they lose. Why is that? That's to encourage the public to bring these kinds of lawsuits, because there's a lot of secrecy in government. We're seeing this play out in Washington, D.C. right now. That's why that law is written that way, to encourage members of the public to step up and take on governments when they're doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So I'm not a lawyer, but I can tell you how this lawsuit's going to be settled. The judge is going to say, "If you did this, don't do it again." And oh, by the way, the county pays the other side's attorney fees because it looks like there's some color within this lawsuit that you might have done something wrong. Nobody goes to prison. Nobody goes to jail. That's how it's settled. From the standpoint of managing the county's money, I have advocated over and over again, cut your losses. You know how the suit is going to end. Don't spend $50,000 on lawyers. Go make a deal some way, somehow, to get yourself out of this. Spend as little money as you can, and everybody go away. That's the way the thing is going to end. I have a real serious problem when I see commissioners letting their emotions get involved in something because they're childish and they're willing to spend a lot of the county's money to defend their ego. I don't care about your ego. If you had one that's been bruised as much as mine has, you probably wouldn't feel anything by now, anyway. So grow up. Settle the suit in the manner that protects the county's money. That's what it's about.
David, do you have any comments? I think we need to correct. He said it was a committee for better government. It actually is three individuals, and we have two of those individuals that filed the lawsuit in our audience tonight. Would you like, would you like to make any comments, either Brian or David?
Well, I would just say that in a nutshell, that's correct, there's three individuals that brought the suit against the county alleging certain things. Mr. Richardson's already mentioned what those things were. All the defendants, the named county commissioners filed an answer denying that that's so. So that's where it is. You did? No, he didn't. And I suppose, well, I'll let you speak for whether or not there's something that we can do to solve this to everybody's satisfaction. I think it's been your position, I would just say this, that if they're willing to take a voluntary dismissal, that's it, we all go home.
And that's been offered?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Item number four is deposit on bottles and wrappers. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I probably mistitled this a little bit myself. It's, we're back to trash and trash in the county and how we go about, how we go about managing this thing. And it's, it's an item, the reason it keeps appearing on the agenda is because you have to keep it in front of people. And one of the questions that I have that I should have gotten an answer for before now, there are two people in the room that might be able to answer it, is on covered, and I'll get to bottles and candy wrappers in a minute, on covered, covered carriages for trash, do we check when people come into the roll-offs? Do we look to see whether they're covered or not? Someone's made a statement to me the last couple of weeks. They said, "Look, if you go into Pitt County and you're not covered when you come into the roll-off, they won't let you dump till you go back out and cover it, and then come in." I don't know if that's true or not, but? But, but I, you know, I think we should take a look at initiating something like that, because I have seen a lot of uncovered containers. And a covered container, a container, by the way, is a pickup truck body that's got a load of trash in it. That means that pickup truck body needs to have a tarp over it to keep stuff from blowing all over the place. So, I mean, can, can, can the manager find out what the rules are for the various roll-offs?
I can tell you, apparently, you don't go to one very often.
Not at all.
I mean, I go to one at least two or three times a week, and I put my garbage inside of a big, green, heavy-duty bag, and I never lose any. And I don't want you or anybody else telling me I got to go out and buy a tarp to go across the back of my truck.
No, it's covered when you do that. The law says that the container has to be a covered container.
So, so my green bag is?
That's a covered container.
Okay.
But if you, you throw a load of leaves in there and drive to the dump, you got to have a tarp.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can answer a question on that. There is a law in Burford County that if you have trash on the back of your truck, loose trash, whether it be leaves or limbs or whatever, you have to throw a tarp over it. That's a law. Now, if you've got it in a green bag, like you said you do, no problem.
Well, who enforces that?
Nobody.
Highway Patrol, it's supposed to. I know I've been pulled over several times.
Yeah, yeah. Be careful. Don't admit any trash.
Commissioner Booth?
I don't get it. I may be wrong. I don't think that's the law. What the law states is that you are liable for your cargo. If it blows off, then you are eligible for that 250.
They'll write you a ticket.
Yeah, they can write you, but there's no law that you got to have a tarp over it, unless they changed it since I retired.
I think there is.
Yeah.
That's what the Highway Patrol told me anyway.
You got your money, didn't you?
According to this, there's a 2001 law that says any truck carrying sand, gravel, or rock must put a tarp over it.
That's right.
So for that, I think on the other piece of it is, you're liable and subject to a fine or subject to even arrest, I think, because it depends on how much trash you stroll out on the road.
That's right.
But you could drive down the road and have trash in the back end, as long as it doesn't blow out.
You're all right.
Littering, and you're not in violation. But as soon as it blows out?
You're in violation.
Then you're in violation.
That's right.
But the sand, gravel, and rock evidently is their law, and they have to keep stuff from blowing off and hitting other.
Derek, you can get your money back.
Well, yeah, I would like to see about the covered load thing from, and you're right, it gets to be a little bit complicated. I don't know how we would handle that. We do, but we need to find out how Pitt County, because they're our closest neighbor, enforces their stuff. I was at one of their convenience sites in the last week or so. I mean, it was pretty clean. I mean, you didn't see trash bloat around, stroll around, or anything like you do some of hours.
If you take your, if you take your trash to the dump in Pitt County, and you don't have it covered, they write you a ticket right on the spot.
We need to find out about that. That can be a local ordinance.
I also know that even in the, in the city, when they pick up our trash that's in plastic containers, I mean, in plastic bags like Frankie's talking about, they cut them. I carried a load to the place out on Cherry Run Road, and it was all bagged up, and the lady that was working there, and I was going to throw them in the dumpster, she said to me, "What you doing? You got to cut those bags open. You cannot put those plastics in those containers." I said, "But why?" She said, "We all made the rules, though. Don't put it in." So they will require you to cut. You can't put plastic bags in those containers.
Seal plastic.
Yeah.
You mean, you cut the bag and throw the whole thing?
You got to cut the bag off, let your leaves and stuff fall off.
We're talking about two different things.
What do you do with the bag?
Huh? I don't know what you do. Well, I'm trying to tell you how you get it to the dumpster.
They don't do that. They don't do that in Chaco Winnity.
Well, I think we're talking about leaves and debris. That are going to decompose over time.
Can we, Brian, can we require, under a county statute, to put covers, require covers on all trucks?
No.
I'm not talking about pickup trucks, because you said something about stone, sand, and gravel.
I don't, I don't know that you could. I don't know that you, you may have statutory authority. I mean, I'd refer to the county attorney or, you know.
Because it's a state road, you probably, you may not.
Well, I mean, maybe you could. I don't know. Unless you are given a specific authorization to do something under the statute, then you don't have the authority unless you fall under the health, safety, welfare, and those kinds of.
Because the other day, I was behind a dump truck on 33, and he lost half his load of leaves. I mean, the road was covered by.
That's the kind of stuff I'm talking about.
Yeah. They were all over the place.
That's what you need to do, is call the Highway Patrol when you see that.
That's right. Report it as a.
Yeah.
And have, have law enforcement involved. I mean, there's, you can't preempt state law, and there's a state law regarding that. So we had a conversation with the folks at the school of government about that, and you're not allowed to lay on top of state law and additional state law, or additional law in this area that addresses that, because they already, they already preempted you on that.
But if you drive off of the public highway onto the county roll-off site, you are now on county property, and county ordinances can apply. And I would imagine that's how Pitt County's doing this. Something we need to look into, and see what they've got for, for rules and ordinances, because Pitt County is a little bit cleaner than we are, I, I would say that. The other thing that's going on, the public is, may not be aware of, I checked into this, the, the state of North Carolina on certain corridors, oh, certain corridors, you might think there might be politics involved in that, does pay contractors to clean up litter. And I've seen them working up and down the roads, and, and some, most of those people are paid to, to, to clean up that litter. And that comes out of Department of Transportation funds, and that's costing us money. And that brings me down to the last thing, and then I'll turn, turn this issue loose. But this is something we need to keep working on. So, Mr. Manager, did, did we decide whether he can find out how Pitt County enforces their stuff and bring that back to us?
Is that specific to, I mean, I just looked at their solid waste website, and it says that if you see anybody littering or an unsecure load, then call a certain number to report it, but...
Yeah.
I'll be glad to delve into it.
But if, but if, you know, if they're issuing tickets or enforcing cover on their property, I think we need to take a look at that.
I'll, I'll certainly find out.
That's something that's worthwhile. And then the last thing is this thing, that I've had people have just driven me nuts with this because they don't like it. And I can remember when we had it before, it was a pain, because I have lived through this, when you had to put a deposit down on a pop bottle. In those days, we had glass bottles, and it took up a lot of space in the grocery stores. So if you start talking about, "Why don't we put a deposit on these bottles?", and I'd put it on a candy wrapper, too. I'd put it on anything that can be thrown away that somebody has to pick up, because people will pick that stuff up and they will turn it in to get the money. It takes up a lot of retailing space. So retailers, guess who's going to be your biggest contender fighting this up in the legislature with eight lobbyists walking around? It's going to be people like Walmart, all of the retail stores, you're going to have to fight every one of them. But if you take a look at your soft drink bottles and candy wrappers, and some other wrappers, you will see, and it names the state, this thing is worth five cents in these states, this thing's worth 10 cents in these states. So there are states that do it. And it's, and you say, "Well, Richardson, what are you doing talking about a state law?" Well, a lot of state laws originate in little places like this, and it would be a very contentious thing if it were to come up, but I, I don't mind going in that direction, because there's just too much litter out there. So if we're going to get that next month, we'll have it back on the agenda.
We're down to item number five on the agenda, the Beaufort County Schools District, Redistrict Update. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I won't spend but a minute on this. I understand that the school system is forming a committee to take a look at developing the database for being able to district and redistrict and do a whole bunch of other things. So that, that committee is being formed, so I don't really, I'm getting what I want, so I don't know what I've got to complain about.
Okay, we're down to item number J, Items For Decision. Number one is the award of standby power at Seaboard Building. Christina.
Good evening, Commissioners. If you recall, back during the budget approval process, there were quite a few capital projects that we agreed to do this year, one of which was providing standby power for the Seaboard Building, which is where our server room is located. And we put the project out to bid, we received bids on November 30th. Wilson Roads Electrical Contractors out of Greenville provided the lowest bid, and you'll see attached the bid summary sheet. When we, no additional funds are required for this project, however, when the budget ordinance was put together, we were basing the amount of this project on the engineer's estimate, and the bids actually came in a little higher than that estimate, so it's $14,000. So what, you'll also see attached is a budget amendment which just moves money from one line item to another line item.
Any questions of, Christina?
You said this $14,000 is just the, would, would you have enough money allocated for the project?
Correct, for that specific project.
You made me feel good, I thought it was a change order.
No, sir, not a change order.
Thank you.
It, it's in the total for the capital improvements. Okay, we entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion by, by Commissioner Langley, and a second by Commissioner Booth. All, any question, comments? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. The vote was unanimous. Thank you, Christina. Item number two, the replacement of the emergency services vehicle. Carney.
Mr. Chairman and Board, as you see before you, we, in responding to one of the, the last snow accidents, we had, in one of those accidents, we ended up wrecking one of our vehicles, and that vehicle ended up being towed, and it was a 2011 Ford that, that ended up being totaled by our insurance company. In that, coming back to replace that vehicle immediately, because it is assigned to, to our emergency manager for the county, we started looking at what was going to be the most universal, versatile thing for us. We are requesting that we replace that with a half-ton pickup truck, and, and we are requesting that it have a four-by-four capabilities. And in your packet, what you have in front of you is actually for a three-quarter ton truck. And the reason for that, in the timeframe when we started looking at state contract, the half-tons were more expensive than the three-quarter tons, when we looked at the state contract price in itself. We were able to get a local dealer, which was Pacellas here, that would go just under the state contract with a three-quarter ton, but the half-ton was still going to cost us an additional $1,500, $1,800 more. So we submitted what we had at the time, we continued looking, because we looked at an operational cost, we think, averaging out the gas, that it would cost about $1,300 more a year to operate the three-quarter versus a half, and we really only needed a half-ton truck. So we actually went back and we, we went out to, we, we kind of went further circle in, in some of our local dealerships, and we were able to find Felpe Chevrolet in Greenville that would offer us a half-ton pickup truck instead of a three-quarter ton, and still beat what was, what was the state contract. So I'm asking before you now, not only the paperwork that's in front of you, but for us to be able to replace this truck with a $1,500 four-by-four, and it's $29,337, which is just under what you actually have in your packet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Carney, did, how much did we get from the insurance company for the 2011?
$7,558.
Okay. Was that a two-wheel or a four-wheel?
That was a two-wheel drive vehicle.
And you think that's what caused it to, to wreck during the snow, because we, it wasn't a four-wheel?
I won't say that that's the only, that that is the reason of the wreck, but it certainly gave us issues. I, myself, in our first storm, parked in the middle of the road overnight, was pushed out three times for being parked in the middle of the road. And, and we don't have snow that often. The four-wheel drive capability is not because of snow. It helps when snow comes, but we're a very rural county, and our job in emergency service is just having to get all over the county. We have a, we have a lot of paths that, and sometimes not paths, that we have to be able to get to. And we just, we really believe that's the most versatile thing for us for emergency services.
Well, Glenn driving that truck.
He wasn't.
Was there, was a loss prevention report done on this accident?
Yes.
And did it come to a conclusion about what to do to avoid the accident next time?
Yes, sir. We, we did both supervisors' report and, and turn that through our safety director for the county.
So moved.
All right. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed?
I'm buying vehicles, I learned, I didn't know how to buy one.
All right, we're down to item number three, the EMS purchase.
Thank you for letting me, Commissioner. If you look in your packet, you see the bid tabulation for the variatic ambulance that we sent out. We got this bid tabulation, as they were open, you'll see the lowest bid on there is at $186, When we did a careful review of each bid, we found that the lowest bid was grossly deficient. They left out one of the stretchers. And it was very specific that we requested two stretchers. One was a variatic stretcher, and then was the, the other was for a regular PowerPro stretcher for regular 911 operations, and that was omitted in our bid. So the next bid was with Southeastern Specialty Vehicles at $190,150, and that's out of Southeastern Emergency Vehicles out of Youngville, North Carolina, where the closest QVN facility is. And they had all the specifics that were required at the bid, including the two stretchers. And they were the next lowest bid that fulfilled all our requests for specifics. And we'd like your approval of purchasing this item.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second.
I got a question.
Okay.
What, what is the cost of the item that was omitted?
$14,000.
Oh, really? So it definitely put them over.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. Any other comments, questions of Glenn?
No.
Okay, all those, all those in favor of the purchase, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Glad that one, Glenn.
All right, item number four is the Hospital Authority Board Directors. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, this is back on here this time, because the Hospital Authority Board met, but I'm not sure the Hospital Authority Board really did anything. And it was on here in case there was some action from the Hospital Authority Board, and apparently there's nothing that comes before the Commissioners this time, but I'm still concerned that Biden owes us $300,000, and that we made no attempt to collect that money. And the information that we need to make an assessment as to what our rights are is being shielded by the closed session minutes from the Hospital Authority Board. So this doesn't look good to me, and there, there is no date for shutting down the Hospital Authority Board, and there is no date for transferring the funds from the Hospital Authority Board to the county. So all of that stuff's still out there. I would ask Commissioner Buzzio to, to report on what the status of all this stuff is.
Commissioner Buzzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, on the approximately $300,000 overpayment, there was a, CMS came back to us, and because of the, the hospital was submitting bills to Palmetto, which is a billing company that processes for the government. And Palmetto was putting in the wrong codes, the hospital was submitting on the proper codes, Palmetto was reversing the codes. And with that, Beaufort Hospital received about, I don't remember the exact number, but I think, let's say it was around 1.7 million, something around there, I'd have to go back and look, but it was over $1 million in payments, which at the time probably helped Beaufort stay open, because it was on the verge of bankruptcy, hospital. And this went on for about a three or four-month period. Last year, CMS finally caught up and said, "Hey, we want that money back." And in there, there was the overpayment, there was interest, and the Hospital Authority Board, after looking at it, having attorneys look at it, having a firm look at the process, make sure the numbers were correct, went ahead and paid it, plus interest, which we really don't understand, but CMS required us to pay interest even though they, Palmetto made the mistake. There was some consideration in there that possibly Beaufort Biden Hospital owed us the money. And our attorney sent some letters to the hospital, and this went back and forth. And it was decided by Hospital Authority not to pursue it any further, after talking to our attorneys and the number of members on the board. It was decided that, number one, we had no idea whether, in fact, we would win the case, whether the case could be dragged on for years. If you start looking at attorney fees and appeals and things like that, it could have been over $300,000. So the Hospital Authority says, "Let's just take what we have and not pursue the lawsuit", and they voted seven to one not to do that. When the Hospital Authority was set up, which was back in 2011, I think it was October... I don't know if I got it here. I want to go over and give you some background on this information. Here we go. It was set up August 31st, 2011. So Beaufort County entered into an agreement and established the Beaufort Hospital, Beaufort Regional Hospital system as a Hospital Authority back in October, I mean, August 31st of 2011, or October 2nd, 2001. And then, when they had the acquisition in 2011, the Hospital Authority, Beaufort, the county received six point, about $6.9 million from past overdue accounts from the, the hospital because of trailing liabilities, and Beaufort Hospital, Beaufort Biden Hospital didn't want to be responsible for those trailing liabilities. So they gave this money, the county gave this money, county received the money, gave the money to the Hospital Authority to pay trailing liabilities. And the intention at that time was the trailing liabilities, the money in that account probably would go. And when you look at the agreement, the intention was, is that the, possibly by September 1st, 2016, all the past liabilities would not be in, there would not be any. But when you read the agreement, there was a statement in here that said September 1st, 2016, and I know I'm going about it the wrong way, but I want to bring you up to the date. September 1st, 2016, if the county did not dissolve the Hospital Authority, the money would have reverted back to the Hospital Authority and would have been under their full control, and the county would have lost all responsibility for that money and oversight of that money. So back in 2016, the county made a change in that agreement to say, "We have this other liability pending, about $1.8 million, let's just change the agreement so that this 2016 goes away." We paid the liability, we ended up with about 4.9 million, 4.6 million, I think about 4.6 million now, and it keeps going down because we keep paying bills. And then on October 25th, the hospital, the county made the decision, after the audit, financial report was done, to dissolve the Hospital Authority, and that's where we stand now, is the county will receive about 6.4, $4.6 million, which we never assumed it'd even be there when this was originally set up. David is working with the Hospital Authority Attorney, the Hospital Authority CFO, and Aaron Roberts, who was involved in originally, I believe, David's setting up this Hospital Authority and this agreement with the county. So I don't know when that will be completed, but we're hoping it will be completed as soon as possible, and that money then will transfer to, from the Hospital Authority to the county. And it will be put into a line item for health needs of the county. However, the board at a previous meeting said, "Hey, we're going to borrow 3.5 million dollars from the banks, pay about 2.8% interest. Why don't, set this money sitting there, since Biden just gave us $190,000, $200,000 to buy a variatic vehicle? Why don't we borrow the 3.5 million for these 10-year projects from this line item and pay back interest of 1 point...
I think it was probably about $400,000.
About $400,000 interest. No, 1 point something percentage.
1.2, I think.
1.2 is the interest rate, yeah.
Which saves the county about $300,000, so we don't have to go out and borrow the money from the bank. So we had this money sitting there, once it's transferred, we're going to loan the county out of this line item, 3.5 million, save the county taxpayer about $100,000 minimum or more, maybe 300,000, I'm sorry, about 300,000 tax dollars, save the county, and the county's going to pay back this line item. So we've got 1.5 million in there we'll end up with, and every month the county make a payment and plus the interest. So the bottom line is, the county has control of about $4.6 million, and is going to use it for healthcare needs, but also in this loan, instead of us borrowing the money. So that, that gives you some idea why we're not paying the 300,000, and also how we arrived at that dollar figure. While I'm, Mr. Chairman, I also want to present to you now the Beaufort County Independence Accountants' Report on a Financial Standard, and I'll present it to the chairman and the vice chairman, who are both members of the Hospital Authority, that found that our books were in order and we have no issues. And this... And this was for the period from August 2015 to November 30, 2017. So we're in good stead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any, adults have any questions?
All commissioners are going to get a copy of that report, right?
Yes.
Financial report? I'll email you a copy. Oh, and I should say one other thing, Mr. Chairman. When the, as the three attorneys work on the dissolving the Hospital Authority, at that point in time, all the records that we hold, Hospital Authority holds from 2015 September, currently will be turned over to the county. Both the invoices, whatever bills we have, minutes of meetings, closed session minutes, whatever I possess from that period of time will be turned over to the county and K D in separate files labeled so you'll know exactly what you have.
Any other comment? All right. Item number five is the Sheriff's Office mileage. Commissioner Richardson.
Gee, that's kind of hard to talk about with what we've just been through on this. But, excuse me. The purpose of this, and we need to discuss this, and then I would like to make a motion on this after we discuss it, is, you know, sheriff can say what he wants to, but he's not allowed to use county property. He's not allowed to use county property for personal use. The deputy is the same as the sheriff, and that's what he was saying to you up here because you have the right to control your deputies because they represent you when they're there. They're the same as the sheriff being there. So that makes a special employment condition. I understand that. But still aren't allowed to take county property and use it for personal purposes. I don't care who you are unless it's approved by the commissioners. And the commissioners, if you really think about it, since we have to vote on that in public, how many times do you think the commissioners are going to vote to allow county employees to use personal property for their personal gain? So that's where I'm going to with this. And that's the question that the sheriff did not want to answer when he was in here and when he left, because that's the question I was trying to ask him. And the sheriffs have been told, sheriff, I told his chief deputy, which is the same as telling the sheriff, the issue of the strong arm taking of county property of the taxpayers and assigning it to people for personal gain is not going to go away. And the reason for that is, I think Commissioner Langley alluded to here, it is the responsibility of commissioners to protect your property. It's not the sheriff's responsibility, as he said. It is our responsibility to do that, and the sheriff is directed by the courts to then carry out our will. So he does not have the initiating authority in here like he wants to claim he has unless a citizen comes in and says, somebody stole my property. That's criminal. Or unless the commissioners say, go out and get our property back. So there's a whole lot of cross currents going on here with sheriff and his understanding of the law. And with that, I would like to hear from the commissioners about how we would proceed with some kind of a motion directing the sheriff that county employees who are in his employ, who use county property for their personal gain, are required to pay us the mileage for the use of that property, in this case, cars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Manager, did you ever get the vehicle use policy from the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, it was in your agenda last meeting.
If you can remember the reading.
Yep.
What did it say exactly and what, if you recall?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I mean.
Well, what policy said is the county has a policy that says very clearly, no employee of the county can use, take the county's property and use it for personal gain. And that's, it's very clear. I forget the exact wording, I'm paraphrasing it. The sheriff has a policy, and he brought his policy in, and it didn't say anything like that. And the policy that the county has applies to every employee of the county. And the sheriff is trying to play this game that deputies are not county employees. That is bull crap. And you can quote me on that because we write their check, we pay the overhead and the fees that go with their employment. He has a special employment relationship with those employees, but they benefit from all of the county employment programs that we have. So under the definition, if you get with the IRS and start trying to decide who's an employee, and those of us that are in business do this all the time because you're always running into this thing where people are saying, oh, you just paid me cash separately, and you don't have to worry about the taxes and all that other stuff. Well, without a lie, how much risk do you want to take? So the definition of an employee is very clearly understood. The special relationship that anybody who employs a deputy, and by the way, the same law that the sheriff is trying to make you believe up here in his interpretation, that law is included in that, is not just the sheriff, but the register of deeds. Because the register of deeds has deputies. The register of deeds can't do all of the work that's done in the register of deeds. So the law that talks about the sheriff and what he can do is the same law that talks about the deputy register of deeds. It applies to deputy registers of deeds. So, you know, this is, you can, it's like everything else, you can interpret it however you want to, but there's a reality out there that comes into, that comes into play with this stuff. So our personnel policy does not exclude the sheriff nor the sheriff's deputies from the use of, the personal use of, or personal gain of county property. And if you think about it, there's a lot of county property over there, and we've had abuses in the past from the sheriff's office that involved equipment and items, a boat in particular, and with, when the last sheriff was here. And they had to gall to come to us and ask us to replace the engines in the boat. How long do you think it takes to wear out two 150 horsepower Mercury engines? How many hours do you have to put cruising the river to wear the engines out? Well, that happened with the last sheriff. And we all sat here fat, dumb, and happy and believed even figured out after it was over with what had really happened because the public began to tell us, oh, yeah, I see that boat running up and down the river all the time. Sheriff doesn't patrol the river. What was going on out here? Oh, they were all dressed in shorts when they went by here. Oh, really? No kidding. So these are things that we have the responsibility of protecting the public from, and we are the buffer on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Richardson. I mean, this is.
That's like a spear.
The sheriff should have told him something.
Knife out of your back.
I'm not sure which would I offend.
I'm offended. My, what was I going to say? Got to watch my age, I sometimes I forget. County policy says, the sheriff may authorize law enforcement officers to park the vehicles assigned to them at the place of residence when not on duty. So that's in our policy. And then, in the sheriff's policy, it talks about vehicles owned by the county and assigned to the sheriff's office shall be used for official business only unless the specific use is approved by the sheriff or chief deputy. And then it goes on to say, sheriff's office vehicles be operated at all times in accordance with all state traffic laws, county and city ordinance, and policies and procedures of Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Unless there's something out there, but when I read state law and I read this policy here, is the vehicles are to be used by the sheriff and his office for law enforcement purposes, but the sheriff has the authority to authorize some non-official business at times, not routine, but at times. That's the way I'm reading this and some of the state law that I've read.
Well, if I may comment on that.
All right.
The sheriff's policy.
Let's wait.
Okay.
Let's wait.
And the one thing I want to be sure of is, whatever we do, we don't interfere with law enforcement that could impact the residents of this county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Well, looking at, I mean, I'm, I mean, we don't have a way of charging a deputy for mileage, and I couldn't vote for this. I mean, I mean, like anybody else, like Carney over there, if you don't spank his hand, he gonna keep on sticking it in the cookie jar. But what I'm saying, I'm saying that to say this, I cannot vote to, to charge an employee for something that I'm not sure that he done. I don't have no way of measuring it. I don't know how many miles that he has drove the car. And, and, and that's just the way I feel, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I mean, you heard here today that how bad we treat our employees, and I don't want to be one of them per se, but this is one time I just can't go along with charging them all back mileage for something that I don't even know when they done it, how they done it, or what was the cause.
Commissioner Evans.
I kind of concur with him because basically, we don't have any way to really know who, what, when, where, and how. And that is one of the questions that you need to answer. And the other thing is, if I were going to charge, it would not be the officers, it would be the administrator who gave them the permission if I were, if I had to charge someone, because if your boss tells you to go and do something, when a deputy works at the pleasure of a sheriff, if the deputy comes to work tomorrow and the sheriff doesn't like the way he looks, you're fired. The deputy has no recourse, none whatsoever. So the deputies themselves are at a disadvantage. And I've said this before, I have a soft spot for the Sheriff's Department. I worked there for 14 years, so it's just hard for me to really be mean to any officer at the Sheriff's Department. I certainly not going to punish them because of the sheriff. As bad as I, I hate to say this, I understand things happen in the lives of deputies, and sometimes they fall into bad situations, whether you have a deputy who can't manage his money, and let's say he loses his automobile, and the only way he can get anywhere is with that, with that car, which I know who is going to eke me up for this, but that doesn't, that doesn't faze me if he has to take care of business with that car. The only thing I want them to do is be lawful in their operation of that vehicle.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Evans said, raised.
Yeah, I believe you, we want to leave this to the department heads, and it doesn't matter to me whether it's the tax office that go on reevaluations, the EMS guys, sheriff's office, water department. I mean, you're going to be out in situations, and I don't think that, I think we have better things to do than sit down and just watch around. Those department heads know what's going on. They understand if they're being abused, their equipment's going to go down really fast, and they're going to be coming back to us and going to say what's going on. And I don't think we need third parties out there chasing down, as I've heard in the past, you know, vehicles just going up and down the road. I think we've got some darn good department heads, and I think we need to leave in their hands. That's, we're allocating equipment to them, let them supervise us. We, again, we're a governing body, we're not micromanagers. Let the governing body establish what needs to be done and let them do their job.
Commissioner Brown.
I have to agree with Commissioner Evans and Booth and Langley. I'm not going to vote for this for the simple reason as I don't want to see any county employee be punished for something that somebody else has allowed them to do. What I'd like to really see is, the sheriff knows at this point is out there in the public, been here in the commissioner's office now for three months, and hopefully, he will correct this problem himself. And if he, if he don't, then the controversy will continue going on and on, and then we may seek a little bit different strategy on it. But I think we ought to leave it alone and let the sheriff handle this and see if it'll go away.
Mr. Richardson.
Well, I'm disappointed that my fellow commissioners don't understand what stealing is and the misappropriation of property. I'm also disappointed that they've undercut the manager in being able to enforce the present policy by saying, oh, gee, it's okay to use that stuff for personal profit. What's he going to do now? You know? This is not a good thing from a policy standpoint, and it's not a good thing for the public. And quite frankly, I don't want an elected official representing me that doesn't know what thievery is because we've got too much of it in the United States now, all the way from Washington, DC to Washington, NC. This is a great disappointment to me that these men will not protect your property as they have been elected to do. I'm going to go ahead and talk about a couple of other items that came up in here. The policy statement, what you need to understand is, there's a county policy that says you cannot use the county property for personal gain. That is a county policy. That applies to every piece of property that the county has, buys, purchases, that is paid for with a taxpayer money. It doesn't matter where it goes. The second policy that these, some of these guys very skillfully tried to make you believe subverts that is the sheriff's policy. The county commissioners have never approved the sheriff's policy. You heard him stand here and say, he's an entity unto himself, he's a power unto himself. He never asked us to approve that policy. It doesn't mean jack to commissioners that stealing and the misuse of public property is still thievery. It doesn't matter how you want to look at it. And insofar as being mean to employees on the use of personal property, we're asking the sheriff to make the list up. We're not asking for employees to turn themselves in. The sheriff knows how much he has authorized the use of personal property for. So we're asking, my motion would ask him to do this. Nothing falls on a county employee, those poor county employees. And if you're a county employee and you don't know what thievery is, I don't want you working for me. You know, go get a job somewhere else where they approve that kind of stuff. Because I, as a commissioner, don't approve of stealing public funds. And there's some state laws on that, even if there aren't county laws. So that overlaid those.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
I do know stealing, but I cannot accuse those deputies of stealing.
I didn't ask you to. The sheriff is the one that's going to do it.
And as bad as the sheriff, and as much as the sheriff said he'd run his mouth tonight, I still cannot vote for this motion to punish somebody for, some of them didn't even know they was doing wrong, if they was doing wrong.
He doesn't need to be working here if he didn't know what stealing is.
I rest my case because you ain't going to change.
No, I'm not going to change. I know what stealing is. Apparently, some of you guys that have worked for the government in the past, maybe you've used those vehicles for personal uses, and you got a little place in the back of your soul that you just can't give up because of it. So let's all get down to reality.
Mr. Richardson, I did use a government vehicle, but I'm not going to pay back mileage. Let's put it out there. Let's don't dangle it.
Condition is good for your soul. Stealing is still stealing.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I have one more thing.
Make it short.
Public, yes, yes, sir, you're taking my public rights and my right to speak, but you know.
No, I'm not.
Well, I'm sitting here with the board, don't know what stealing is, so what's it used to keep?
The agenda item that you're supposed to be speaking to is the mileage.
Yes. And I'm addressing the arguments that these gentlemen put up. This is a deliberative body, isn't it?
You've had, you've had your time.
If this is not a deliberative body, you need to tell me. No, I'm going ahead and say what I'm going to say. You get the sheriff to throw me out of here.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
Public secrecy when employees use vehicles. It is unfair to the public because we don't know when they're using them, but the supervisors do know when the stealing is going on.
Well, I think to accuse our employees in the county of stealing is pretty damn luck.
It is.
For an elected official to do that.
They are lucky when they steal.
I think what, what he's trying to say is that when the deputies drive their car home at night, which they're assigned to do that, that's stealing.
That's not what I said. Stop putting words in my mouth. We're not addressing the policy that deputies take cars home when they're on duty and have 24-hour service of a car. We are addressing when they take that car and go to Raleigh to pick up furniture. We are addressing when they take the dog to the vet. We are addressing when they go buy groceries. How do you know when the sheriff's on duty and when he's not? You don't. It's unfair.
I think you're just making some false acquisitions. I mean, do you have proof that somebody's taken one of our cars to Raleigh and picked up furniture?
You're supporting thievery, you know that.
Now, I think you're way out of line.
You are supporting thievery.
I think you're way out of line in your comments. I think when an employee drives a car home, it's assigned to them, they're on call 24/7, that's not personal use.
That's not what we're talking about. That is not the issue. Nobody ever said that. I define the issue, it's stealing. I define the issue, it's stealing, using for personal gain.
I think, uh, I think it's time to move on. I, I disagree with you.
All right, move on.
Totally, totally.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Brian?
Just one statement, um, I, I appreciate the comments by the board. I, I would say to the board that our employees and our staff members follow the policy that you have set, um, they know that policy, um, and, and we encourage you to let us know if you see, feel like somebody's violating that policy, and we'll address it. Um, but we do, our employees know that, and, uh, and have confidence that they're doing the right thing until they don't do the right thing, and then we deal with that issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Commander?
One, one other comment, Commissioner Richardson, is, you know, I think, uh, I think if we have anybody using it for personal use, there is a way of getting around them writing a check. They can, we can show a benefit value for tax purposes and be, that be reported to IRS, and that's, that's the way most of the business world handles that.
When it's approved, I'm talking about thievery. I'm not talking about permission, I'm talking about stealing.
I think, I think we have some pretty straight...
You guys are really lame.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Point of order. To sit here, and throughout these words of stealing, liar, misinformation...
Ignorance.
It's really sad that an elected official has to do that against employees of this county. This shows a total lack of professionalism, a total lack of knowledge, and a total lack of profound thought.
I don't know if you noticed or not, but Donald Trump, Trump is President of the United States, and we don't, we're not politically correct. We don't have to be politically correct anymore.
That's the truth.
Item number six is the Beaufort County Industrial Park, Commissioner Richardson.
I have a concern about the industrial park and the way it looks, particularly during the growing season. I, I was out there, and we brought this up at the last meeting, and really what I'm looking for is some assurance from the manager that we have in this contract requirements that whoever farms that property is gonna keep the property looking decent, because I was, I was raised on a farm, I know what a weed is. Uh, and I was out there last summer in August, and the park looked horrible. The ditch banks were grown up, there was foreign weeds in the crops that, that, if you looked at the crops, you said, those are weeds, they shouldn't be there. And you could go out on plenty of, all other soybean, uh, farms in the county, and you did not see weeds coming out of the soybeans. It was ragged looking. How can you possibly expect, you've got four buildings out there that are standing vacant right now, how can you possibly expect to bring people in here to look at those buildings unless the grounds around the buildings and the rest of the park that we own are properly kept? That should be in our lease, and it's not hard to apply herbicides now to keep these weeds out of crops.
I'll ask, to show respect to the speaker. Go ahead.
Well, I don't know, whoever was disrespectful, thank you. I'm finished.
Well, I mean, it was distracting.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. I, I, you know, I just think this is something that should be in the agreement that we have, and, and, and if we're employing, if we're leasing that land to farmers who are not, if you will, first-class farmers, then we need to take a look at this and let somebody have it. We can afford to rent the land for less money than we would normally get in order to make the place look good.
You've, you've had some comments back and forth to me on the lease, you wanna bring those before the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, just for clarification, actually, we didn't discuss that last meeting, you sent me an email, Commissioner Richardson, um, about that, and the conversation we've had, it's, it's a, it's a joint, it is a joint agreement between the city and the county, um, and we did not have any language in that agreement. I've had conversations with the county attorney and with the city attorney, uh, on that lease, and where, there will be some language added into that lease agreement that reads, um, the farmer's required to use best management practices, I think. Um, Mr. Chairman, you, you'd mentioned that, that was pretty standard language you've dealt with in, in lease agreement, farming agreements that you've had, um, and also that the, um, that the ditch banks in any area that's not far will be mowed at least one time, um, during the term of the lease. Um, it's, it's a little bit difficult for them to mow when there's crops in the field, but at least, um, when they're outside the mowing, outside the harvest season. So, um, that language will be added. We are still waiting on the city, the, the city attorney is modifying that agreement, they actually, I think they wrote it last time with some consultation from us, so, uh, we're waiting on that, but, but that language is in there.
The, the item that you raised about subleasing was covered in the lease.
Yeah, I had heard, I had heard whoever's getting that lease was subleasing it to somebody else, I don't know.
It, it's in the, it's in the agreement that it's not supposed to be subleased.
Well, then we need to be checking, where's Martin? We, Martin needs to be checking when they're out there farming to be sure that it's not subleasing, that's not hard to do, you can see whose equipment's out there, ask a few questions, but we need to be sure of that.
It may not be subleasing, it may be what they call custom farming.
Okay. Doesn't matter to me, I'm looking at the quality of the work, either they're, either the place looks good for visitors or it doesn't.
You want to, you want to go to item number seven?
Well, the littering law, I think we pretty much beat that to death.
Yes.
I would take that one out.
All right, we're down to item number eight, the FEMA flood maps update.
Yeah, I have a proposal. The, the FEMA flood map situation, we, we beat that to death with the state, and they've, they've did, did what good bureaucrats always do, it's not our fault, it's somebody else's fault. So they've passed it up to the feds, the feds use a contractor, I forget the name, it's one of the big engineering firms, to manage these things, and on the, and we're, what we're talking about is the new FEMA flood maps that will lower the flood level for virtually everybody in Beaufort County. And my estimate, we do, my, in my business, I do a lot of flood work, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm hurting my business when I do this, so everybody can see, everybody can sit up there and say, Hood's lining his pockets. No, I'm not, because when the flood plain gets smaller, I have less work to do. I figure, based upon the work that I'm doing for people, at the higher rates that FEMA is charging, my estimate is, there's $5 million in flood insurance policies to be saved every year once these maps are approved, because there are significant changes. Now, the fact that the state has done what all good bureaucrats do and bumped it off to the feds makes us a federal problem. I, I would propose that we use, and we've used, what's the name, is it, it's not Ferguson, another outfit, but we've used them before. I think we need to get to, to our Washington lobbyists that we've used before, and we need to be approaching, hire them to help us get these maps approved, because if they're approved a year, that's $5 million circulating in Beaufort County, uh, that would not be circulating in Beaufort County. Uh, this, this is a big, bigger deal than it looks like. And you've got adjoining counties, and they might be willing to go in with us to help, to pay a little bit of money to get these things, because the, the state is saying that they will only approve them in blocks of three or four counties at a time. These maps have been ready now for two years, because we use them doing what we're doing. Uh, even though they're not legal, we use them as informational sources. So I would propose that we, without delay, uh, uh, appropriate money and see if we can get the adjoining counties to help us with the amount of money, I would say $30,000. These lobbyists are not cheap, uh, for the purpose of, uh, expediting the approval of the FEMA flood maps, uh, so that, uh, they will take effect and save people money. And the way this works is, when FEMA gives us the final maps, the commissioners have to approve them. The reason that we approve them is because they're enforced as a part of the building code, and that's enforced by the county, it's a county ordinance, so it's, it becomes enforceable. Um, that's my proposal.
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Richardson, I, I don't have...
I'm, I'm sorry, let's, let's get a second, otherwise it dies. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
I, I'll second.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion. Now we're ready for discussion.
I was, I, I thought the last time we, and, and this is a good idea, but, but, uh, Pitt County, I mean, the surrounding counties that you're talking about are joining with, Pitt County's, uh, uh, flood zones is already better than ours. So what counties would, would you partner with? And the other thing that I asked, I thought that, and Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you was already, um, uh, getting us together with our delegation in DC, and this is one of the things that we had on the agenda, was about these flood maps. So, so if we can get, if we can get them in there, and you run your mouth like you, up there like you do down here, we might get something done. And I think, did you really, that was one of your items that you had on the agenda, wasn't it?
The letter from the chairman has been written and signed and sent to your congressional delegation, and we have meetings already set up with your congressional delegation or with staff members of the congressional delegation.
So let's take that approach first.
That happens in March, first week in March?
Yes.
I, I don't mind doing that, but I, I don't wanna let this thing die, because they're, they're telling us two years...
We ain't gonna let it die.
And, uh, it's, it, it, it's a lot of money to people in Beaufort County.
Honestly, last we've heard from them, February of 19, so we're, we're about a year out.
Yeah.
Well, the maps have been ready for two years, so, you know, then we're into, we're into what was supposed to be a one-year program, it's now a four-year program, so, uh, forgive me if I'm not trusting.
Okay, we got, we got a motion on the floor in a second. Mr. Evans?
Uh, back to the surveying part, yeah, once those maps are done, most of your banks are not, believe it or not, about that trusting, so the survey is gonna have to do a revised base flood elevation. That's what they wanna see, I wanna make sure they got any engineering events, they wanna, they want to see what the current base, because some houses have been raised partially on their own, but I haven't found a bank yet that didn't wanna see a new base flood elevation before they gonna lend any money.
But there's still a lot of money laying on the table.
There's still a lot of money potentially that could help.
I, I, I agree with you.
The surveying will continue, but yeah, the, the base flood, the FEMA, uh, insurance rate will drop, there's no question, which will be a plus for Beaufort County.
But, but what I was asking, Mr. Richardson, let's, let's get a stab at it when we meet with our delegation.
Oh, yeah, but I'm not...
I'm not saying just let it drop, but, but let's, if we had to spend that $30,000, $40,000, that'd be the last resort.
Do I need to withdraw my motion for this meeting until after we go to DC and get back?
Yeah.
I'm willing to withdraw it, I just don't want the thing to die.
It's not gonna die.
I, I think it's, I think it's on top of our list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just like to say one thing, my, my concern with, with these maps are, and the software that FEMA uses does not take in consideration stormwater runoff and things of that nature. So these people that think they're, they're gonna just do away with their flood insurance are gonna find that they're gonna be flooded anyway. Just because FEMA says you're out of the flood plain doesn't mean that you're out of the flood area. So I think that people ought to know, you take real good care of what you got and make sure that you, uh, you don't make the wrong decision.
Well, if I may elaborate on that for just a minute, we're talking about the flood insurance rate maps. This is what you're rated on when you, based on the base flood and some other factors, uh, when you buy flood insurance. Uh, the, the present maps are based on the 1913 flood event, which, right out there, there was boats rode on Second Street, right in front of my office in 2013, we got photographs of them to prove it. That was an unusual event, they didn't know whether it was a 100-year, 500-year, or 1,000-year storm. And what happened was, a hurricane stopped off a hatteras and literally pumped water right up the Pamlico, and there's some real stories, if you go back and, and read them about people in Pamlico County that stayed on rafts for two weeks as a result of that storm event. Didn't have a lot of wind, but had that particular storm event. So, uh, 19, 1913, gee, it's a 100-year storm, so 2013 has come. That means that that data from that flood is kicked out, and everybody runs around and says the same thing. Well, when that, and water hadn't been as high as they say it's gonna be, says as long as I can remember, my granddaddy can remember. That's true. That's why the flood level is going down, because the risk has gone down, and the rate will go down, because these are insurance rate maps for underwriting purposes. So yeah, you're right, I, I, I would tell people, I tell people the same thing, if you're gonna build, build according to the, to the 1913 flood, uh, man, but pay your insurance based on the 2013, uh, flood maps, and that's where you save the money.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, item number nine, the resolution supporting the widening of the NC Highway 306. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a resolution, uh, supporting the widening of 306 from 33 to the Beaufort-Pamlico County line. DOT's got funds now to widen and resurface that road. You will see that, based on some input from our staff, um, because we have some water lines out there, if you'll, you scratch that, we've, we've submitted you a revised resolution, and you've got that additional whereas pack, um, further be resolved paragraph, that reads, uh, as part of this project, it's requested NC DOT relocate at its own cost any water lines that conflict with the project, so they're a minimum of five feet beyond the edge of pavement and in compliance with, uh, with Deaner regulations regarding depth and placement. So we wanted, not that that's necessarily gonna happen, but we wanted to be part of the motion to say that if they're gonna resurface and move stuff, we want them at their cost and our utilities. So, so you should have that updated resolution in your package or on your desk, so we'd recommend your approval of that.
I'll entertain a motion to...
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Buzzio, and a second by Commissioner Langley. Uh, any further discussion? If not, call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion was approved unanimously. Uh, and item number 10, the manager's update, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a couple of things, you've got the proposed planning or recrete agenda in your package from page 88 and 89, um, there's one adjustment to this, there was a request by a board member to have the county attorney do a presentation, um, on what constitutes a conflict of interest and how, how board members should, should apply that and, and deal with that. So we're gonna plug that in the afternoon, Friday afternoon, uh, for them to have a conversation, for him to do that.
We need that, based on what I've seen this board do tonight, that's very important.
Um, so, in general, so, so in general, this is, um, this is the layout, we'll kind of, some, last year, we'll be at the Cooperative Extension Office, and, uh, just wanna give you that information, if there's anything else that, that you'd like for us to put in there, we'd be glad to do it, just give you an opportunity to review the legislation.
Just a reminder to the public, this, this two-day meeting is gonna be at the Cooperative Extension Building, not at the airport.
Yes, sir. So here, I guess, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that, add that section. And the next piece is your proposed budget calendar for this upcoming fiscal year. As you'll see, it's similar to what we did last year, um, with the manager's recommended budget being presented at a special meeting on May the 14th, um, and then workshops after that. Uh, it is our intent to, um, to, to have that, um, budget adopted at a special called meeting in Ju, on June the 11th, um, if the board so desires to do that. Last year, I think, after your public hearing at a regular meeting in June, you adopted, um, you certainly can adjust that as you want to, but this pretty much mirrors last year's, um, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I assume, we assume all these meetings are in the evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Evening.
Okay. All right. You got anything else under the manager's update?
No, sir.
You want to, you want to address item number 11, the memorandum of understanding between, uh, Beaufort County and Hyde County?
I would, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, this is a MOU that was drafted, um, in working with, um, Vic Williams, who's our 911 director, and Justin Gibbs, who's the emergency services director of Hyde County. As you recall, um, we, in our communications project, were using Viper towers, um, as an opportunity to save money without us having to build towers on our own, we're, we're co-locating on those Viper towers. One of the issues that we ran into on the Ponder Tower was that, once they did the calculations for our additional antenna on it, um, the state said the tower was overloaded, which they would then require us to strengthen that tower. Um, the, the cost of strengthening that tower was in excess of $200,000, which was not in our budget to do that. So we went back and had some conversations, what they have, both our radio provider as well as Hyde County has agreed to, is that we're gonna use, um, technology to solve the problem, and that's simply, we're gonna use one antenna, and we're gonna use a combiner which allows us to run two frequencies through the same antenna. Um, so this is an MOU, it, it, so we don't have to, we don't have to strengthen the tower because we're not putting anything additional on the tower. The additional stuff will be down in the, in the, um, uh, the trailer, or, or the house, the, the building, the radio building below it, um, the combiners will be there. But this will allow both of us to use the same antenna, um, and it will meet the needs of Hyde County for their system, and it'll meet the needs for us. Um, this is an MOU that says we'll be responsible for maintaining that and looking after it, uh, and that this is an agreement between the two, the two local governments to do that.
Of course.
Yes.
Maintaining what, just our antenna or the whole tower?
Maintaining our antenna and the equipment. Right, we would have to do that anyway.
I understand, but that was one of my questions, I was gonna ask who was gonna do the maintenance.
No, actually, the maintenance of the tower and the maintenance of the, that was one of the reasons we moved to the Viper towers, because the state maintains the towers and the state maintains the electrical backup and all that kind of stuff, so it, there's the same savings.
Connected with highway patrol?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I need a motion to approve. Commissioner Buzzio made the motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, the next item is the School Facility Needs Committee Appointments. Brian?
Yes, sir, thank you. Last item I have for you, the school board, as you see, has established a committee to review school facility needs and long-range planning for the school system. Dr. Phipps has invited two to three members of the board of commissioners to serve on that committee, so we leave it to the board to decide how many. Obviously, you can't put more than three on there, but two, three, who may want to serve on that committee.
I'm gonna move, as chairman, that myself, Jerry Evans, and Ron Buzzio be the three commissioners to serve on the committee.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six, one. All right, we're down to item number 13, dead offer to purchase.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we excuse Mr. Richardson from this part of it.
All right, I'll second that motion. All those in favor of excusing Commissioner Richardson, raise your right hand.
Go home.
David, you're up.
Thank you. We have 15 offers pending, we're holding deposits on 15 offers. You will note that they, I think, without exception, are in the town of Valhavn. They're all by one individual who made all those offers. They are all subject to being advertised at this, at this price and subject to an upset bid, and if they're not, they're, we run one time in the paper, like we've been doing, and so the statute requires. And someone will end up owning these properties and get them back in the tax rolls.
So move.
Got a motion to approve the offer in a second. Any discussion?
Was that, you bundled them, right? All 15 of them?
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, yeah.
We got a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to the closed session. This time, I'll ask Katie.
Motion is due to go in a closed session under NCS 143, F318, 911, A3, consult with an attorney employed or contained by a public body in order to preserve the attorney's claim permanently between the attorney and the public body.
Need a motion to go in?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, and a second by Commissioner Evans?
What is the subject? Talk with the attorney.
That's the subject?
That's the subject.
I can't sit in a meeting like that. I'm not gonna sit in a meeting that I, the public has a right to know the subject. If we're gonna talk about the lawsuit that is against the county, we need to talk about that. If we're gonna talk about entering into an agreement to do something, three words will do it. But I'm not gonna sit into a public meeting that you go in, that's a secret meeting, and that's what it is.
It's a, it's a, it's a, I'll say this, it's a meeting to see whether or not the county wishes to join in a lawsuit.
Okay, that's enough. I can vote for it.
All right. We didn't vote, did we? Okay, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, vote was unanimous. Okay, we're coming out of the closed session. At this time, we're gonna have a comment by Commissioner Buzzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to request that I be excused from the vote, based upon a perceived conflict and/or natural conflict. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. You're excused. Do you want to be excused?
Oh, no.
For the whole discussion?
No, he can stay here, there's nothing, and this one, some of them they have to leave, but this one, he doesn't have to leave.
Brian, would you or David like to? You want to go to your mic?
Chairman, we, we discussed this in a closed session, and the question of whether or not we want to enter this lawsuit. We've been asked to execute a resolution, which you all have been over, and authority to represent a contract to, to be represented in this by Michael J. Fuller, Jr., lead counsel, Drew Warden Smith, including, and this has to do with the opioid.
Brian?
If you want me to, there's a resolution. I think they had to read that resolution.
Okay, if you want to do that, that would be great.
All right, this is the resolution you're being asked to adopt. Whereas Beaufort County Board of Commissioners has the authority to adopt resolutions with respect to county affairs of Beaufort County, North Carolina pursuant to NC General Statute 153A, 121. Whereas the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners has the authority to take action to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its residents and citizens of Beaufort County. Whereas there exists a serious public health and safety crisis regarding opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality in Beaufort County. And whereas the legal diversion of legally produced controlled substances into the illicit market causes or contributes to the serious public health and safety crisis involving opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality in Beaufort County. Whereas the opioid crisis unreasonably interferes with rights common to the general public of Beaufort County involves a significant interference with the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and convenience of citizens and residents of Beaufort County, including, includes the delivery of controlled substances in violation of state and federal laws and regulations, and therefore constitutes a public nuisance. Whereas the opioid crisis is having an extended and far-reaching impact of the, of the general public health and safety of residents and citizens of Beaufort County and must be abated. Whereas the violation of any laws of the state of North Carolina or of the United States of America controlling the distribution of a controlled substance is immeasurable, harmful, and adverse to the public welfare of the citizens and residents of Beaufort County constitutes a public nuisance. Whereas the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners has the authority to abate or cause to be abated any public nuisance, including those acts that unreasonably interfere with the rights common to the general public of Beaufort County and/or involve a significant interference with the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and convenience of citizens and residents of Beaufort County. Whereas Beaufort County has expended, is expending, and will continue to expend in the future county funds to respond to the serious public health and safety crisis involving opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality within Beaufort County. And whereas the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners has received information that indicates that the manufacturers and wholesale distributors of controlled substances have distributed in Beaufort County, North Carolina, and surrounding areas, and may have violated federal and/or state laws and regulations that were enacted to prevent the diversion of legally produced controlled substances into an illicit market. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners assembled on this day, at which a quorum is present, that based upon the above, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners are declaring an opioid crisis, a public nuisance which must be abated for the benefit of Beaufort County and its residents and citizens. It is finally resolved that all resolutions that are inconsistent with this resolution are rescinded, and the motion is approved. The motion to approve the foregoing resolution was made by whichever commissioner, seconded by whichever commissioner, and was approved on a vote in favor of for and against. That's the resolution.
All right, you gentlemen have just heard the resolution, and you've had a chance to read it. I'll entertain a motion to- Motion by Commissioner Evans, and a Commissioner, Commissioner Booth made the second. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. The vote six unanimous. And we need a separate motion for the authority to represent-
Yeah, I think it would be okay, Mr. Booth, to enter into the authority of representing the contract.
Okay. And each one of you's had a chance to look at the contract. Entertain a motion to approve the-
So moved.
Commissioner Brennan, and a second by Commissioner Langley. Any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. The vote was six. So you're right. Is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
David, do you want these back?
Did we vote? All those in favor of adjourn?
You want these back? This contract?